This conference will now be recorded.
I like my ancient colors. And it is the color, and it was a state fair color, so I wore it for my state fair. For them too. Thank you. My birthday present.
Yep. So, Hailing, Tennessee?
Yes. Um, no, in Stunwell, he chose Saint Thomas, the highest, and represented the saints. Because he's so into teaching, and being a step of faith, life is important.
She's a pretty good scout building.
I'll show you her first chance, I guess, with Lloyd's, she was all those kids wrapped up in saints, and then there's her picture. You know, she's the only girl who chose to be a god, because she thought real much of him, and when you read her two pages explaining that one is dead, it's like, okay, I'll take that for a birthday present. I mean, you guys supported her and praised her, and just working on her being a saint. So, I think if we have to, I had a good time. We all got on Saturday, we had the kids, they all got to church on time, it's still a long way to go. I think Scott here's impressed. I don't keep, maybe I'm getting something else this morning. I think John's over there at the table. All right, if I could get everybody's attention, everybody's attention real quick. Before we commence with tonight's agenda, I must address this important safety protocol, or region is no stranger, the onset of severe weather, it's imperative that we're all prepared for any eventuality, including tornado warnings. Should the tornado sirens sound during the meeting indicating imminent threat, we will immediately move to adjourn the meeting. At that point, you have two options. You may choose to leave the premises at your own risk, or you may follow city staff that will direct you to our designated shelter areas, including the basement and old jail cells, which will have been deemed as such for such emergencies. So, just keep that in mind, guys. I hope that we don't have any weather, but it looks like we're gonna get some right around seven twenty or so this evening. So, just, like I said, you can either leave, or you can follow city staff, and what you send. With that, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is prayer followed by pledge of allegiance. Captain Massey, you have the floor.
Did you stand as able, join me, by the invocation? Dear Lord and Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Sedalia City Council administrators, mayor, members meet to hear about, to discuss, and to make decisions for the betterment of our community and its citizens. We are so grateful for their dedication and service to our city. We ask your protection for all of first responders, police, fire, sheriff, EMTs, hospital staffs, ambulance service, all who work 24/7 to serve and protect us at their own risk. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which so many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve for these 247 years. We ask your blessing and protection for all who serve this country today, both military and civilian here and throughout the world, protecting our way of life from threats from without, and more sadly, threats from within. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again, and all this we pray in the name of our arisen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Paul Paul, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
All right, next on our agenda is consideration for the nominating and location of the Missouri State Fairgrounds associated with the Ozark Music Festival for a historic landmark status. This nomination aims to acknowledge the site's historical relevance. Community Development Director John Simmons will provide an introduction to this topic. After his remarks, the floor will be open to the public comments. Those wishing to comment are asked to come to the podium, state their name, their address, and keep their remarks to three minutes. Do you have the floor, Director Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor Dawson. We have before us an application from a group spearheaded by Dr. Doug Kibbers to designate the site of the Ozark Music Festival of 1974 as a landmark in the city of Sedalia. This application went first to the Sedalia Historic Preservation Commission, which is comprised of Becky Imhauser, Byron Mattson, Charles Wise, Bill Mezerly, and myself. And they made recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which it then went to for their recommendation. So, it went first to the Preservation Commission, next to Planning and Zoning, where they made a recommendation to City Council to approve this as a landmark in the city. And we want to keep in mind that in this designation, it's through a resolution designating the site as where something significant took place. It's a landmark. Whether that was good or bad is not the question, it's the fact that something significant in our cultural heritage, in our history, occurred at that site, there were lessons learned from it. In fact, the event itself changed how the state of Missouri, through statutes, determines what happens to a festival, and how that process is approved by the state legislature. So, although we had bad consequences from that festival, there were ramifications that required corrections to how those are allowed in the state of Missouri. So, this application came from Dr. Kibbers, but the applicant's name, who originated this, was Jeff Lujan and Chris Fritz. In the report that the commission gave to the Planning and Zoning Commission, let me just, I'll go over three quick paragraphs, and it kind of relates to why this is important. The site is significant as the festival held at the site was the last major summer rock and roll music festival held for the following decades. This poorly organized and ill-equipped festival was also a turning point in festival development with the Missouri Legislature, enacting statutes and provisions to reduce the risk of future events in Missouri communities. This 1974 Music Festival drew an estimated, depending on who you talk to, 160,000 to 350,000 attendees at Wolfman Jack's invitation to the event. The set list for the festival was a veritable who's who of legendary performers of the 1970s, whose music still comprises our daily lives. The festival is not only a vivid memory in the lives of our residents, who recall the event with either enthusiasm or appall, but it also piques the interest of national and international audiences while displaying the generational differences that mark the cultural transition of that era. So, that's what you have before you in considering this. I think it's very important also to note that this is a designation only, this has no monetary benefit to anyone in the community. This is a designation at a predetermined site with the Missouri State Fairgrounds' approval of that designation and the marking of that site as this event occurred here. It's kind of like George Washington slept here. Thank you.
So, hey, John, I've got a question.
Yes.
Can you read what's gonna be on the plaque?
The plaque is provided by Doug Kibbers and his group of folks, so there's no city funds on the plaque. And I'll read the plaque as it was presented to the commissions. "Ozark Music Festival, July 19 through 21, 1974, Three Days of Sodom and Gomorrah. On this site, expanding over the Missouri State Fairgrounds in Sedalia, Missouri, the Ozark Music Festival was held on an atrociously hot weekend. After the Summer of Love in 1967 in San Francisco, and the Woodstock Music Festival in 1969 in New York, the evolution of rock and roll and the counterculture movement came to the Midwest. The greatest bands of the era came to entertain the approximately 160,000 festival-goers from across the country in a festival coordinated by promoter Chris Fritz. The suffocating heat and ill-prepared town and attendees alike managed through the sometimes desperate conditions, creating memories both marvelous and disagreeable, but nonetheless unforgettable. The Ozark Music Festival remains a keystone in the transformation of the music, cultural, psychedelic, and political times of the 1970s."
So, then I have a point. Can I comment as a citizen?
Councilman Bliss, there will be opportunities to make arguments for and against whenever we consider the resolution later in the agenda with regards to the community development agenda.
There's no public comment now?
I'm not ready to open the public hearing with regards to that.
Well, we're gonna have a public hearing, right? And it is gonna be public comment?
Yep.
So, I prefer to make a public comment as a citizen instead of a councilman, but I'll do it whenever you think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we'll go, thank you, Director Simmons. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone would like to go ahead and give a public comment with regards to this landmark designation, please step to the podium, state your name, your address, and you'll be allotted three minutes. Come on up.
I would prefer to do it as a citizen.
Well, I thought you did. You're more than welcome to step to the podium there.
People, 607 West 26th Street, Sedalia, Missouri. I just, I support this and everything that John said, I think it needs to be designated, but I have problems with the wording on the plaque because it mentions the promoter's name. I personally witnessed A.J. Campbell suffer for three days to keep people alive at that event, and at the very least, Dr. Campbell's name should be enshrined on a plaque in the basement of the women's building, in addition to this plaque that mentions one person's name, the promoter. And I know it's wonderful remembered history now, but at the time, there was a lot of pain, and there was a lot of negative at that point in time. It's okay, I can forget about that, but I'll never forget how hard A.J. worked for three days to literally keep people alive, and I was just so proud of him, and that's just what came to my mind, is I think we should also, there's probably a dozen people, or dozens of people, we should recognize. But my personal experience, Jimmy Campbell was my best friend, I was there at that house, and I saw A.J. fight for three days with no sleep, or little no sleep, in the heat, if anybody knew A.J., in a jacket like this, and I just think I would request somehow that we also recognize Dr. Campbell's efforts during the Ozark Music Festival. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Bliss. Anybody else?
My name is Gary Olden, I live at 821 South Arlington Avenue, and I couldn't quite hear, what would that landmark read? Does it say how a landmark will read?
Point of information, Director Simmons, could you come forward and go ahead and reread that landmark for this gentleman's edification?
Because I'm, it did happen, it's historic part of Sedalia, and I think it's a good thing, but if I would add something to the landmark myself, yes, but never again.
We'll get that entered into the public record, we'll have Director Simmons come forward and read that for everyone's edification once more. And I think that is the lesson from the festival.
And that's why we could still mark it.
That's why we need to mark it. Okay, so, rereading of the plaque that the promoters of this, or not, the applicants have created at their expense. Okay, it's "Ozark Music Festival, July 19 through 21, 1974, Three Days of Sodom and Gomorrah. On this site, expanding over the Missouri State Fairgrounds in Sedalia, Missouri, the Ozark Music Festival was held on an atrociously hot weekend. After the Summer of Love in 1967 in San Francisco, and the Woodstock Music Festival in 1969 in New York, the evolution of rock and roll and the counterculture movement came to the Midwest. The greatest of bands of the era came to entertain the approximately 160,000 festival-goers from across the country in a festival coordinated by promoter Chris Fritz. The suffocating heat and ill-prepared town and attendees alike managed through the sometimes desperate conditions, creating memories both marvelous and disagreeable, but nonetheless unforgettable. The Ozark Music Festival remains a keystone in the transformation of the music, cultural, psychedelic, and political times of the 1970s." Thank you, Director Simmons. Thank you. Would anyone else like to go ahead and give a public comment? Go ahead, if you could, go ahead and go to the podium.
I just want to say, 1974, I lived in Kansas City, Missouri, worked at Belle Island Chevrolet, and I was coming to the festival. Thank God I had a CB in my van, because when I got off the Interstate 70 on the 65 Highway, the traffic was backed all the way through the highway. I called ahead on the CB, they said, turn around and go home. I went home, I did not make a set. I went home and after, then when I moved here, and I worked for Bud Hincon, and heard his stories, I could understand, I was glad I came back home. But I will say, Bud, I just gotta share this story, he enjoyed the festival. He had to station there on the corner of State Fair Boulevard and 50 Highway, and what he enjoyed about the festival the most was the girls that'd come down in the wash bays, strip down, and we got to hose them all. And he was like 70 years old. Anyway, that's, I just want to say, I think this is a good thing for Sedalia to remember this, like he said, never again, but I think that's what the plaque says, and it did open the legislation in the state of Missouri to where it couldn't happen again, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hiller. Anyone else?
David Covington, 2601 East 12th Street, Sedalia, Missouri. My question is, do you really want to have the word "Sodom and Gomorrah" on your plaque? I know it's history with Sedalia, I understand the history of Sedalia. I'm not from Sedalia, but I'm a part of Sedalia now, and I'm learning the history of Sedalia. It's got a lot of rich history here. Man, y'all got, there's a lot to happen here in Sedalia. But on a plaque, "Sodom and Gomorrah," I don't know. It might have seemed like that, it might have been like "Sodom and Gomorrah" during that time, but biblical times, I don't want to compare that to "Sodom and Gomorrah." I think we're more of a rich town, we got more of a pride of Sedalia to have a word like "Sodom and Gomorrah." I think we're more better than that, we move forward, I know it's history, but those are certain words, I don't want to glamorize on "Sodom and Gomorrah," it's something to think about, I just want to share that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. Anybody else?
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Point of information.
Yes, point of information from John. With that statement that was just made, should we vote that we say yes to doing a plaque? We're not saying yes to the wording, we're just saying yes to the plaque, is that not correct?
We're saying yes to the designation, and it is in the hands of the applicant what is on the plaque, and what the Missouri State Fairgrounds has approved.
So, if they have concern about the wording, then they should take that to?
To the applicant.
Okay, and the applicant, can we tell them who that would be?
On the application, Doug Kibbers, Dr. Kibbers forwarded that to me from Jeff Lujan and Chris Fritz. So, we're not paying for the plaque, we're not proposing the wording for the plaque, we're designating the site as a historically significant site.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clarification so that our audience and our citizens would understand that it's not City Council that's saying the wording on there.
And I think Councilman Bliss's comment about mentioning A.J. Campbell at the site of where he saved lives is valid too, that's something that can come forward to the commission, and we can take that application on too, and say, hey, this is important here. All right, thank you for that point of information, Director. What we are looking for from the public is, what do you think's important in Sedalia? Bring it to the Preservation Commission to designate as a landmark. Go through that application process so that we're hearing from our residents what they think's important in our history also. Thank you, Director.
And I would also offer to that, we certainly will make these comments, they're the public record that's created, here's the ninth available to them.
Very good. Anyone else? All right, going once, going twice, go and close this public hearing. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is approval of the previous session minutes dated March 18, 2024. Do you have a motion to second?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Any council discussion during the minutes?
I was staying for the minute.
Having heard on, all is a favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the roll call of standing committees. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Chief Irwin will discuss the location of the fire station.
Good evening, Council. Just as a point of record, I was also not at the music festival. I was too. So, tonight, we're gonna discuss the, sorry, let me turn that off, discuss some of the stuff going on with the fire stations, fire station locations, I put it into PowerPoint So, just to go over some of our objectives, basically, the objective of the fire department is basically to provide exceptional service to all of our citizens, ensure the protection of life property to the best of our ability, ensure the health and safety of our members to the best of our ability, accomplish this while remaining fiscally responsible and not creating an undue burden to the taxpayer, utilizing resources wisely to ensure they are used for facilities that will serve our citizens for the next 50 years. Forecast growth and expansion to ensure facilities are placed appropriately in order to provide exceptional service for the next 50 years, and ensure our decisions today are sustainable tomorrow, preventing layoffs, brownouts, station closures, which will ultimately lead to taxpayer waste. Okay, in no way, again, I will repeat, in no way are we or any member of the Sedalia Fire Department against placing a station on the north side of the railroad tracks. This administration's desire for that was demonstrated in the three-station model that we presented to you guys a few years ago, with that diligently developed and pushed extremely hard over the last several years when that went away. Once the community spoke against the use of the park system, we did not give up, we went through and looked at many different locations and evaluating what they were. I will say that we had originally chosen the parks for their location in the community and the heart of the community, most of our parks are the heart of the community, and we wanted to be a part of that, we wanted a station where all the kids could come in and look at the fire trucks and see what we do on a daily basis. During the delays required for the redevelopment and reevaluation of these plans, many things have changed or come to light. The additional information on the current and prospective growth and annexation of the city, our sales taxes has flattened by the financial reports, and other major city projects have been recognized, such as public works, infrastructure needs, streets, roads, water, all of those things. So, we have a few options that are in front of you, or will be in front of you at some point. Option one, moving forward with the rebuild of central fire station at its current location. Option two is moving forward with a two-station model, with the new station constructed north of the railroad tracks. Option three is moving forward and finding a suitable location to move to a three-station model, with new stations constructed on the north and southeast side of town. And then option four is do nothing and utilize the central fire station as it sits. Option one is recommended if unable to, if we are unable to fund a three-station model. Rebuild central fire station in its current location. The pros and cons of this are, there's no additional cost to staffing, no additional cost of apparatus, the single-station construction cost is right around $5 million, there is no land acquisitions for that, quality coverage will still allowing us to adjust to growth in any direction. Projections lead us to believe that the move from two to four stations in the near future is probably gonna happen, with growth of the industrial park and growth of Southwest, so going from two stations, from three stations to four stations is quite possible in the near future. Having quality coverage in the center of the community makes for the transition easier. The cons of this is potential for the need to reroute responses north of the train, if a train is present. Portions of the south, southwest, north, and west, and the airport are outside the average estimated four minutes response time, and we will go again over our response times and the location of it. Option two, although we're not recommending this based on data, is moving forward with a two-station model, with a new station constructed north in a suitable location in the community. Pros of this is that there's, again, no additional staffing cost, no additional apparatus cost, cost of the station is still the same, it does improve our response times to the northern portion of the community, there are 677 residences by our calculations on the north side, and a reduction of potential issues responding north of the railroad tracks due to train traffic, it does not eliminate them. That truck would still have to respond to its run box that will be south of the railroad tracks, so there is an opportunity, if it's already out on a call, trying to get back to the other side of the tracks. Cons of this is potential land acquisition and costs, potential for the need to reroute responses south if a train is present, so basically, we are inverting the issue that we have now, with where our central fire station is located, getting to the north side, if we put it on the north side, it inverts to the south side. That increased response time in the south and southeast, 1,243 residences are affected by that, and that is east of Engineer. The station and apparatus would still be responsible for all the east side calls, all the calls east of Grand, that is its run box, Grand is where it starts. Train concerns would still be exist for the northern portion when already out on a call. Option three, this is all recommended and preferred, this is what we tried to get, what we tried to move forward with a few years back, is a three-station model, with a new station constructed north and southeast. The pros of this, that we've gone over before, is improve response times to all areas of the community, reduction in potential issues responding to areas of the community due to train traffic, additional personnel improves our capabilities in fire protection, EMS, increases safety for the citizens and our own personnel, allows for more calls for service to be answered at any one time, and reduces potential catastrophic loss to all stations and equipment in the event of a natural disaster, we were just discussing tornadoes. If tornado comes through in a straight line, it takes out both the headquarters and central fire station in one swath, we're out of business. Cons of this is the potential for multiple land acquisition costs, the addition of 12 member staffing costs at $1.2 million, and that increases annually, additional apparatus costs, and dual-station constructions at $10 million. Option four, oh man, that's a little reading. Basically, what this boils down to is this, station four is doing nothing and staying with the current central fire station. We all know that the central fire station is in due repair, due need of repair, there's issues with plumbing, there's issues with the living quarters, there's issues with all sorts of things with that building and the upkeep. So, I won't read all of that, then there's some significant modifications that need to be made with that, but staying in the current central fire station, we do not recommend simply because of the age of the building. So, going through what everybody, I'm hoping, is interested in seeing is what our current coverage is, the dark purple is what the fire headquarters is currently responsible for, and then the white blue is currently what the central fire station is responsible for. This is based off 1.5 road miles, and FPA and everybody says that 1.5 road miles is basically the distance a fire truck can respond to in four minutes, so that is what we base these off of. They are not an exact science, if you get down on Broadway, you can actually get down the street faster, so it all is kind of relative to what it's doing. But this is currently our response coverage is with the two stations that we have. After we lost the parks, we didn't just quit, we decided we would look at different areas. This is the current location at the rail spur, if we were to move over by the rail spur, in yellow, currently, that is our same, the purple doesn't ever change. If we decided to go to the cemetery, that's what our response district would be, notice the gap in the middle, and we overlay these again so you'll be able to see them. so you'll be able to see them. If we went to the, um, North Ohio, basically, out North Ohio, North Missouri, that area is where we kind of located at and basically running it in different directions. That is the response district for that, for that fire station. Here they are overlaid. So, basically, you can see the yellow. What we did is we put in red, which is different from the ones we had yesterday. Basically, in red is what you lose from our current run box to what we would do if we went to the rail spur. If we went to the cemetery, you can see, again, where the red is, where we would lose, these are houses that we were uncovering and, um, taking away from our response time. And, of course, then, if we go out on North Ohio, North Missouri, you notice that we lose a majority of the south, southeast, um, and southwest, um, portions of the city. I threw this one back in here. This is the original three-model plan. Um, unfortunately, this is still located at the parks. Um, but you can see what our coverage area would have been with the three-station model in, at the two parks. So, this is all of our calls for the last five years. Um, the redder that it gets, the more calls that we run in it. So, this is both medical and fire. The blue and purple are our current four-minute response times that we currently have. These are our medical calls only. So, you do see there are a few outliers that are out, outside the initial response areas of the two stations. And then the big one is our fire calls. So, if you notice the red swath that runs through, that is the central fire's response time, uh, response district. So, we are currently right where we need to be, if you will, for where our fires are happening. Fire calls only for three stations. Again, if we were to stay in the same area that we were, going to a three-station model, you can see that we overlap all of our calls pretty well, um, and we overlap our hot zones for our, for our house fires. So, these are some of the ideas that we've come up with. So, we can put in a temporary living facility on the north side until we get a bridge fixed, and then we can make that transition over there. I reached out to a few companies. This is just the one that basically responded back to me. This is, we would still have to put out RFQs. We would still have to put it out for bid. We would still have to do engineering. There's a lot of things that we still have to do to get this done. Um, but this is a four-man living trailer. It's, um, would be brought in. Um, there is the monthly rental for that. That's based off of 12 months. Um, delivery here, installation, dismantling, and then return transportation. We do not get to keep it. Uh, once we're done with it, it goes away. Um, and that is the totals for that, uh, the monthly rental and everything like that. This does not include, um, connection to water, connection to gas, connection to electricity, or anything like that. This also does not include a place to step, um, to park the fire truck. Okay, this is just the house, fire service personnel. Um, we would have to get all the permits and all the stuff that we would need to put this in. Um, that would include site surveys, leveling of the site, and all of that. So, this is one building that we looked at for possibly putting a fire truck in. And it's a 40 by 17 by 16 foot, non-insulated. So, we would have to insulate it and put heat in. Um, it costs us about $59,000. Um, again, it would be overhead doors, openers, electric water, gas, heaters, basically everything to do to live in it. We also looked at putting in a 50 by 100 metal building insulated. Um, so, basically, we could also house, um, personnel. We could build rooms in it, if you will, um, at a cost of about $94,000. Again, it does not include lighting, heating, any electric. Um, it is insulated, but we would need to put exhaust systems in, overhead doors and openers for that building. Again, this does not include site surveys, prep surveys, anything like that. We would have to get building permits. Um, all of those things that we, we have, the rest of the general public has to do, we would also have to do.
Chief, just a point of clarification. That does not include the floor, either.
No, that does not include the concrete or anything like that. This is just a building. And the concrete, I don't know what that would cost. It would be expensive.
Plus, it'd be the cost to erect it, too.
On this particular building, no. This is, this is ordering the building and having it delivered, and they would put it up. But they would have to have a fully furnished, basically finished site to put it on, as well as the next building. Um, we looked at 100 by 150 buildings. Um, and simply, the reason why we did that is, is if we decided that we were going to, originally going to go back to the two-station model and go back behind central fire, what should we do with that building after we vacated it as a fire station? Um, so, we designed this one that it could be used for vehicle maintenance, if you will. Um, it is tall enough that our aerial apparatus can get in the building, actually be lifted and the cab tilted all inside. Where currently, we do not have a facility big enough to do that. Um, so, we're just trying to look at other options that we could do. That's why this one is in here. It is insulated, but, again, it doesn't include any of the other options that we would need. It also does not include concrete.
Chief, just a point of clarification. Are we talking about a temporary station for use while the bridge is down?
We're, that's, that was part of the reason why we brought the living quarters in, in the smaller building, is to give counsel an opportunity to decide if we wanted to try to put a temporary building in, the costs associated with that, or if we just want to stay at the central location now and basically do what we've, that we've always done, relying on law enforcement to let us know if a train is there. Um, using the, there's an actual live stream at Ohio that you can see, that can, we can put in to see if the Ohio Street crossing is closed. These are just options that you guys get to decide if you want us to put a temporary building over, if you want us to build a permanent fire station over there, what you would like us to do. We're trying to give you all the options. I am trying to give you all the options that are available to you to make an informed decision.
Very good.
Oh, I missed one. Oh, I went too far. Uh, I don't know how to get back. My bad. Technology's not my friend. So, what we, what this body has to decide is, is that, do we want to put a temporary fire station on the north side while the bridge is down? Do we want to put a full station and basically build it, find a location and build a full-time fire station that's going to remain over there? If we do that, then we need to decide if we're going to go back to the south side and build a third fire station. The staffing that it takes to staff that is, we decided to look at, it's going to be about 18 staff to include the squads. So, that options, all those options are on the table to you. If you want me to put a fire station on the north side, I will absolutely do it. We just need to staff it, and we need to, we need to figure out a funding source to be able to maintain it. On that note, if you decide that you want to go to a three-station fire station, and we have to hire 18 people, the SAFER grant closes on the eighth of this month. It closes next Monday, the eighth, right? We have not submitted that grant for the six personnel that we, that we were authorized to submit for. We could change numbers and do that, and we could try to submit for the 18 total, which would get you three years' worth of firefighters for free. You have to understand that at some time, that bill is coming due, and we will have to pay those firefighters out of our coffers at that time. So, I am, I am open and willing to do whatever you guys want me to do. I just need a direction to go.
Chief, on the SAFER grant, if we, um... If we went with a three-station model, we couldn't have it built before the next grant application. So, could we apply for the six now and then the other 12 next year?
We could. We have a much better chance, and I will just say this. I don't know how that grant's going to go. Um, it is a very competitive grant. I will tell you, we have a better chance of getting that grant the more numbers we put in and if we explain to them that we're going to be opening a third fire station. It just, it increases your point total value with that. If we try to go with the six, which we can, and then try to get 12 more, you're absolutely correct, we could put it. But I can tell you that the SAFER grant is still only funded through this year. It has not reached its congressional, so that it may not even be available to us next year. I say that, I'm hoping that our legislators in Washington get together and decide to go ahead and do it. Um, but it is in the same boat as the AFD grant as well, our firefighters' grant, that it is, it is not funded past this year. So, it is something to consider. I will do whatever this body wants me to do. Yes, and we have options. It's just, it's the ticking clock of, for those options.
Does counsel have any questions?
Uh, I do. Chief, first of all, thank you very much for putting all of that together and the numbers and what have you. I'm the type of person, if I have it in my hand, I can understand it. But looking through here, I'm losing it, so I'm...
I will email it to you if you'd like.
Okay. What I'm going to ask you tonight is, can you give us an approximate number of the cost of a satellite station over on the north side someplace and the cost of a temporary station until the bridge is completely...
Okay, I can. Um, that was one of the, I'll go back through it. So, the first thing that we need, the first thing that we need to figure out is where are we going to staff three personnel? Because currently, if you wanted to put a temporary fire station on the north side, we could staff it right now by splitting crews. We would take a three-man engine, three-man engine, three-man engine, and then we would move to the fire truck, and we would brown out a fire engine on the, on the south side. So, we could staff it immediately if we had to. It would, it would not be optimal, but we could do it. Um, so, the first thing we need to decide is where they're going to live, because we have to have a housing, we have to have showers, bathrooms, someplace to cook for their meals, those kind of things. Um, then we have to have space to put a fire station, or not a fire station, but someplace to store a fire truck. It has to be enclosed. During the summer months, it would be all right. But once it gets cold, it has to be heated and insulated. So, that was the reason why we looked at the, the, bringing in a crew quarters and then finding some kind of building to put, put next to it. Um, those are your options for a satellite station. Now, we could go with a smaller station if we went with the crew quarters. We could go with a smaller enclosed building that's insulated that just fits the fire truck. This was just something that we were looking at to maybe be able to put in. We were trying to keep from having to bring in a building that we're going to lose when they come and take it back and throwing all that money away. But then, when you're done with it, you still have a building that really is small, isn't really going to be used for much. Uh, maybe some storage or something like that. But yes, um, you could bring another building in, inflate it for probably $60,000, $100,000, and then whatever the cost is for the living quarters.
Which was about $110,000.
Yes.
Um, and to get you those numbers, I mean, the chief and I have been talking through this, and the chief's done a lot of legwork to pull just this part together. We have reached out to our architect, and, uh, and we have engaged them to be able to, and they're supposed to come down sometime this week uh, so that we can get more, you know, yeah, we can guess at what it's going to cost for the concrete and all of that, but really, we need to design it to figure out what all needs to be in it, how thick it needs to be, what the base needs to be, what plumbing needs to be in it, what the HVAC is going to cost, all of that. So, uh, we're working on that, but, uh, don't have it for you yet at this point.
So, are we looking, option number three is what I'm looking at here. It says move forward with finding suitable locations and move to a three-station model.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'm not going to lie, that's my preferred, is to build a fire station on the north side and the south side.
Okay.
But once you build a permanent fire station on the, on the north side, you have to do the same thing on the south side, so you...
Absolutely. We don't want to lose any coverage.
We don't want to lose any coverage.
We don't want to lose coverage.
And then finding a suitable location for both stations is what's going to be the trick. Um, we, there are a number of locations on the north side. There are far fewer on the south side that make it line up for our four-minute response times. We can make it work. If we have a gap, we'll have a gap, but we will look for something.
What about the north side, just having a squad only? We were talking about just rescue and evacuation.
So, yes, you could do that. You could put a mini-station in over there just to house a rescue, but then you don't have any fire suppression. So, you're only doing half the battle. Um, we could do it, but yet, we don't have the squads yet. We're still two months out, I think, for the squads. Um, so, we could do that. We could put a rescue over there, a squad over there to run medical calls. If there's a fire, they would be able to do some sort of, you know, um, effect a rescue, just making sure the house is clear. We could do that, but there would be no fire suppression capabilities of that truck. I am all for it. Again, we would have to find someplace for them to live and someplace to put, put the truck in.
Any other quick status of the Vida to prepare? Uh, let's see, who we have? As, we have engaged a, um, an architect, or the engineer, the expert of the bridge engineer. And, uh, within a week, they had been down and done their initial assessment, and we're still waiting on their, their engineer assessment and their, their, uh, plan for what it's going to take to repair it. They're supposed to bring us back three options. Um, the first option is it's just a, an immediate quick fix. What, what can we do to get it back in service as quickly as possible, as quickly and safely possible? And then, uh, a complete repair, and then the middle one is just kind of an intermediate repair if we wanted to do that. Um, we have also, I guess, I'll go ahead and throw it out there. We have also, um, been looking at the opportunity to build a whole new bridge, um, and to add a bridge, uh, you know, in, in another location. I've been looking at those spots, uh, compared, or run it roughly by our engineer, and, um, uh, he says that, that, yeah, it has merit. We can look at that. Um, we need to reach out to the, the railroad to find, to figure out what that would, what that would look like. That is, again, another possibility that we want to bring to you is, is another way to do that. One of the pros to that is, is it does more for all emergency services because, you know, putting a fire truck over on the north side and on the south side, yeah, solves the fire truck problem, but it doesn't solve the police problem or the ambulance problem. Um, so, uh, building a bridge might, um, solve all of those problems better as well as, um, uh, doing more to connect the community and, uh, provide a better service. So, the money that you're going to spend to build a third fire station, you know, would that money, uh, uh, be more useful or less useful of building a bridge? So, um, again, just throwing out options for you all to consider.
And with that in mind, Kelvin, timeline between the two. Would it be quicker to build another bridge or would it be quicker to a satellite station?
Well, certainly to do a temporary satellite station, we can do that quicker, and that's, that's what we're looking at. Uh, because either of those, repairing the bridge or, uh, building a new bridge or building a brand-new fire station are, are going to be, uh, several months out, a year out at least, probably. Um, but now, the repair on the bridge, I'm hoping, is a matter of months, not, not, you know, not a long time period. But either way, we have the immediate concern. And so, that's why Chief Irwin was, come up with that idea, up with that idea, which I thought was a great one, is, is, you know, the pre-engineered buildings that, that they can come in and throw up in, in the matter of a, of a couple of months. If we can rent the, uh, uh, the, the living quarters that are already there, um, then that could be a real possibility. It looks like to me, and again, we, we've engaged the architect, but we don't have firm numbers, but it looks like to me that's at least a quarter of a million, uh, quick fix. Um, and then, probably it goes up from there, it's, it's, uh, the, the architect said, uh, when we said to him in concepts, he said, "Yeah, we could probably do that for about three million," and...
Yeah, I tell that on my chair.
So, yeah, yeah. Um, but, but, yeah, there's, there's something in between there.
Well, and the thing that really brought it home to me, uh, was I, I think it was less than fourteen days ago, there was a train that came through that had a hundred and ten cars.
Mm-hmm.
And you were sitting there for fifteen minutes, waiting to come across, uh, the railroad tracks, just to get to that side of town. So, I'm, I'm thinking to myself, how often does that happen, number one, and should that happen, what are the safety concerns of those that have all...
They are very valid concerns.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and I do not wanna discount that at all. They are very valid concerns. Um, and we try to, as a department, know when there's trains stopped on the tracks, know when long trains are coming through, although UCU doesn't really tell us when they're coming through. Um, but if there's ever a train that's stopped, generally, we know, um, either they've hit somebody or hit something and we're called out, or they're stopped in traction, we get a phone call from joint communications or from law enforcement saying, "Hey, these, these crossings are out." So, we, that is an internal thing that we immediately, we know that then, and we, we, we change our routing process for anything. Um, I will just add on top of that, I spoke to the gentleman about this particular trailer, um, this morning or this afternoon. Um, they are a matter of a couple of days of mobilizing and having this sent out. Um, we could have that here within a couple of weeks. Um, it is the site prep and getting all the site locations and all of that is what's gonna take so long to put, what we're gonna put it on. This building right here, that was one of the first buildings that we looked at, even though that is a non-insulated building, I'm not sure how long it would take, like, space on it. Um, the manufacturer of that building was advising it would take six to eight weeks to be, being manufactured here and built. So, in theory, we could have a station over on the north side within eight to ten weeks. God willing, when the creeps don't rise.
Uh-huh.
Um, because everybody overs, everybody I've noticed is overpromising and underdelivering, and I do not wanna do that to this body and, and overpromise and underdeliver. So, I would rather underpromise and overdeliver, and, and, but those are, those are our options. And they're all options that you guys write the checks for. And, I mean, I'll spend the money.
(laughing)
But, um, it is, it is the direction that you guys want me to go in and how, how we, how we move forward.
Again, thank you for all that you have put into this, and in consideration of what we should go or how we can go.
Well, I can't take all that credit. I've, I've got a, I've got a whole group of staff that have been working on this, and, and it is not just me. We're all looking at it, 'cause your concerns are valid, and it, it is our concerns as well.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, talking about a new bridge, uh, if that were as feasible to do rather than repair the old one, then why couldn't we purchase property and take Hancock going north and put the bridge there, and then you'd be over in northern...
You are talking to the wrong guy.
(laughing)
But, if, if a bridge was off Hancock, yes, it would, it, if we had a no-way limit bridge that went over, over the railroad tracks, it would be, it would, it would be fantastic, and it would help both sides of the community, especially in that location, with everything that's going in there, with the water park, the Boys and Girls Club, it makes a walk traffic, I mean, it, it is, it is a much better avenue. Again...
I'll say it too, because you'd have a straight shot right down Hancock, with the new bridge, you'd be over there in a matter of minutes.
Councilman Cross, get it done.
Where I was looking at, Councilman Cross, was, um, Veterans Memorial Drive. If, if you look just across from Veterans Memorial, where it comes in, uh, comes in on the north side, uh, just across from that, we own a piece of property already that's sixty-foot wide, that would come to Third Street. And, uh, if you look also, the, the Katy Trail comes down that way, so you could actually get rid of engineer crossing and make it a bridge crossing. And I would, I was looking at it from not replacing, uh, Washington, go ahead and re, and repair Washington, keep that as that historic thing. You've got two bridges going across, and if one goes down, then we still have a bridge going across.
Well, uh, what I was saying, though, I'm going down Hancock, you, you have a straight shot.
Yeah. We don't own...
Get all the ownership there, you know?
Yeah. We would have to...
We have to purchase property.
Yeah. And there's a Boys and Girls Club that's planning on going right there where you're talking.
Oh, wow. So, great.
I don't...
That's right.
We, we might, we might wanna break that news to them.
(laughing) I don't need to have any big sound assurance.
Councilman Robinson?
Oh.
I was saying, time being of the essence, it looks like to me this building here, um, which would have a space for a vehicle and a living space, and be able to be utilized after, or maybe continually as a third station, would be the best investment. The bridge is the quickest fix, obviously, but maybe not obviously, depending on how much more damage there is.
Yeah.
It might be, anyway.
Actually, I think this, this, uh, option is quicker, um...
That's true.
Yeah, than, than getting the bridge fixed or, yeah.
If I, if I might, please understand that this is a simple going to be, try to be, if we went with something like this, would be a quick fix. Um, this facility wouldn't have the alarm lights, the radio systems, it wouldn't, I mean, this would not be a full-fledged fire station. So, it is just basically listening to radios and having a pager in the building. It would not, you would not wanna use this as a sustainable, long-term plan as a full-fledged fire station. It would, it would need some significant upgrades to it to, I mean, this, we'd have to have a climate vent system and everything to, to eject the exhaust system out of the building and all of that. Where currently, we're just thinking about using fans, just set up fans, just so when it's going in and out, it exhausts all the exhaust out of it. I mean, if you're gonna look at using something like this for a permanent fixture, there's a lot more to go into it than just putting up a, a building.
And after it's used, though, you could use it for rain, it could be put out.
Yes, yes, once, yes. It could be used for any number of things once it's done. Um, you know, if you're gonna use it as a permanent, permanent facility for a fire station, you're also looking at putting a sprinkler system in it. Um, we may be able to get around the code for the sprinkler system due to an emergency situation. I don't know, but anything that houses a vehicle is supposed to have, have a sprinkler system in it. So, fire code. I think I heard it in the back.
Mr. Mayor, due to the imminent need of needing, uh, protection, uh, on the other side of railroad tracks, uh, do you need a motion to approve the temporary housing for the firefighters to end this first option of the forty by seventy-two by sixteen?
Well, yeah, they would, I would need a motion and then a subsequent vote from the council on a direction that they would like to head.
Due to the need, do you have, do track preferences?
Well, yeah, I, I, I guess I would suggest maybe that, uh, you wait till we get the actual numbers.
Yeah. I agree, you know?
I mean, due to the, then, you, you stated, Chief Irwin, that the individual could have that temporary housing mobilized in a couple of days?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Is there a direction then we could give staff to a number?
Sure.
What would, what do you feel and the mayor feel would be an appropriate number, uh, and what does council feel would be the appropriate number that we could move forward to direct staff to purchase the temporary housing and the forty by seventy-two?
Rent. We're not purchasing, we're renting.
Rent, renting, sorry. Did I say, I meant renting temporary housing and purchasing the building. What does council feel would be appropriate number, so we could direct staff to move forward on the purchase and the rental, so we're able to get the need of protection met?
It's gonna take us a little bit to get those numbers together. I mean, uh, we could go ahead and push this, and we'll give you guys time to think about it, too, and push this to the next meeting.
I, I will reach out to public courts, and I, I did not mean to interrupt, uh, my concrete guy, and see what it's gonna take to, to build concrete and look, and, and try to get a legitimate, actual cost. Um, again, if we're gonna build a building, we would still have to put that out to RFQ. Yeah, we have to go out to bid, and, I mean, it's, it's well over the, the twenty-five, twenty-five thousand now, twenty thousand, whatever it is. We would have to give local contractors the opportunity to purchase that or to build that building. Um, so, you're looking at at least a couple of weeks to get that done and get bids in from that.
Sure.
It's only fair to do that for our local companies.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would ask that during that time, during that fourteen-day time, if we could get input from the citizens and say, "This is what we really would like for you to do. We see all of this, we understand and we hear what it is, but this is what we would really like to have over there."
Mm-hmm.
At least the citizens have a voice.
Right.
It's not just us.
I, I do not disagree. Um, I would also, I tried to find sites and, and companies that do something other than this. This is the only company that I could find. I mean, other than reaching out to, um, like, Pitts and any mobile home companies to see if they would lease them, I don't know if, if that's even an option. Again, I was trying to get what I could and get to a ballpark of what it was gonna cost.
Thanks.
So, maybe we'll further, maybe if I could get a motion from the council to further develop this, uh, temporary satellite station idea, and we'll go ahead and continue on that course.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we will go ahead and further develop this, flush it out, and then we'll bring it back to you at the next council meeting.
Council, Councilman Bliss, I thought you had a...
I, I need a little bit of clarification. First, Kelvin, you talked about a, a temporary, we, we've got an engineer involved now. That engineer is putting together a permanent fix number and a temporary, we can shore that bridge, I would think, or, or are they looking at that and get something up quickly? So, if we can get equipment across that bridge for less than we can do all of this, if it would satisfy the people on the north side and then make them feel safe, I, I'd like to, have we actually instructed that engineer to look at shoring, which is probably gonna have to occur anyway when they rework the, the bridge? I, I don't see Chris here. I think he's gone. But, tell me a little bit more about what you started this conversation with. This, you, you said something about a quick fix. Was that shoring, or do you know yet what that quick fix was, really?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a bridge expert.
Yeah, I know, but, I mean, did you get any conversation, just a quick fix could probably be just shoring what's there so that it would support the weight?
Yeah.
And so, a cost for that quick fix and a timeline for that quick fix would be really important for me to make my decision at a future meeting. So, would you kinda pursue that to, please, sir?
Yeah, yeah. And we will reach back out to him and see where he's at with it and, yeah.
Okay.
Pull, pull us, pull us together the information. The rough numbers that he gave us, just off, off the, off the cuff, was it would take about three hundred thousand dollars to do the quick fix.
Okay, so, he did whatever he considered. But, we really don't know how quick, and we...
Yeah.
So, I'm talking about just going in, shoring it, to get it back to what we need to get equipment across, and then if that's substantially less or substantially more, I don't know, just could start a conversation later on if we know those numbers.
And, and just as a point of reference, the, for this trailer, that is a twelve-month commitment. We have to sign a twelve-month lease for that price, and so...
Well, it is really twelve ti, um, forty-eight thousand dollars. So, if we did that, then we just, then we've got numbers and we've got time, and we can make a decision. Okay.
Yeah, just rough numbers, and you're, you're a little over a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Hundred fifteen thousand. Any other council discussion?
All right, thank you, Chief. You all have a good night.
Thank you.
Please, Robert has a need for, uh, rest, record destruction approval.
Do I have a motion and a second with regards to the record, uh, destruction request?
So, Luke?
Second. All those in favor? Any council discussion? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you, Chairman Robinson. Uh, next we have financial administration.
Uh, for first, I want to know before.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Marshall. Now, we move on to public works. Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. We have eight items to go through tonight. The first item is, uh, is an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. We were granted, uh, we were awarded a grant to connect Katy Depot to Liberty Park, but due to the amount of projects that we have going on at the moment, they've also granted us a one-year extension on that grant. So, we need, we need an ordinance authorizing the agreement.
All right. Call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four forty-seven. An ordinance authorizing a supplemental agreement for the Katy Depot, Liberty Park Connect Sedia project.
Second reading.
Second. Any council discussion regarding the second reading? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four forty-seven. An ordinance authorizing a supplemental agreement for the Katy Depot, Liberty Park Connect Sedia project.
Final passage. Second.
Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this bill? Having heard that, roll call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, go pass this.
Second item I have tonight is an item that we do, uh, quite yearly, actually, where we review qualifications for engineering services for in design. Uh, one of the items that we have is for the scope of services for, uh, for the Central Regional Lift Station. Uh, so, we need to approve an agreement, sorry, we approve a change order with engineering surveys and services for six thousand dollars.
All right. I will call for the reading, uh, the ordinance authorizing the change order.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four forty-eight. An ordinance authorizing change order number one for Small Sanitary Sewer Project A.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for second reading and council discussion regarding the second reading of the bill. Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four forty-eight. An ordinance authorizing change order number one for Small Sanitary Sewer Project A.
Final passage. Second.
Have a motion and a second for final passage of the bill. Any council discussion? Having heard that, roll call, please.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four forty-nine. An ordinance approving and accepting two permanent easements and one temporary easement relating to Small Sanitary Sewer Project A.
Second reading?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the second reading. Any council discussion? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four forty-nine. An ordinance approving and accepting two permanent easements and one temporary easement relating to Small Sanitary Sewer Project A.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Any council discussion? Having heard that, roll call, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any other council discussion?
I have a question to ask, uh, Mr. Waters. Uh, would it be more feasible to, uh, hire people rather than contract that out?
In the last three years, we have not had a full staff, and the two or three people that we're having is students, and I don't have them until June. We need them in April, and we need them in May before Memorial Day. And where we're at, what we've been spending, uh, and the way it's been happening, it's taken us basically close to three weeks to get through the cemetery with the staffing that we've had. This is set up to where we can do this every two weeks, and my plan is, is what we've budgeted on this to get us through into, hopefully, in the summertime, on a typical year, it dries up, slows down, this'll get us through. Um, but, yeah, we're just, we can't find any staff to, and people that wanna come to work for us, just to run a weed eater. So, that's where we're at.
Thank you, sir. Any other council discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna point out, I sat in your budget meeting, and, uh, I appreciated what you said. We would also save on buying weed eaters and all the equipment. It's not that we wanna sublet out, but when you can't get the help, that's what we're faced with. And this company is very reputable, uh, that will come in and take care of our cemeteries. And I've, I have, maybe I might have families out in the cemeteries, and we enjoy going out there, not having to pull weeds around the headstones and stuff, so we appreciate it, Roger.
Thank you.
All right. Any further council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, council. Most passes.
This item I have tonight is an annexation utility service agreement for the property located at fifty-nine forty West Thirty-Second Street.
Okay, I, you have a, uh, call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the annexation agreement?
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty. An ordinance authorizing annexation and utility services agreement for connection to property located at fifty-nine forty West Thirty-Second Street to the city of today's water distribution system.
Second reading?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the second reading. Any council discussion? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty. An ordinance authorizing an annexation and utility services agreement for connection to property located at fifty-nine forty West Thirty-Second Street to the city of today's water distribution system.
Second reading?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the second reading. Any council discussion? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty. An ordinance authorizing an annexation and utility services agreement for connection to property located at fifty-nine forty West Thirty-Second Street to the city of today's water distribution system.
Final passage.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Any council discussion? Having heard that, roll call, please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, go pass this.
This next item I have tonight will consist of four ordinances. The city has properties around, around town that have the capability to produce hay, so we sent out bids, uh, to see if there are individuals or companies that would like to come and, uh, cut that[1713.33] So we sent out bids, uh, to see if there are individuals or companies that would like to come and, uh, cut that hay and bale it and take it. Uh, those properties would include our north and central sewer plants, uh, on the water department located at, uh, tw- twenty-eight two hundred, twenty-eight two eight two zero zero Waterworks Road, and then properties along the rail spur, and then out at the animal shelter, Spring Fork Lake, and Old City Landfill.
Okay, we have four ordinances with regards to this matter. We'll start with the first one. Call for the ordinance authorizing the lease agreement for the hay production on the property at North Central and Central Sewer Plants.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-one, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement for hay production on property at the North and Central Sewer Plants.
Second reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-one, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement for hay production on property at the North and Central Sewer Plants.
Final passage.
Second.
Have a, uh, motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, next call for the ordinance authorizing the lease agreement for hay production on the water department's property located at twenty-eight two hundred Waterworks Road.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-two, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement for hay production on water department property located at twenty-eight two hundred Waterworks Road.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading. Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-two, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement for hay production on water department property located at twenty-eight two hundred Waterworks Road.
Final passage.
Second. Have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, call for the reading of the third ordinance authorizing the lease agreement for hay production on the city-owned rail spur property.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-three, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement for hay production on city-owned rail spur property.
Second reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for second reading. Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-three, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement for hay production on city-owned rail spur property.
Final passage.
Second. Have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
All in favor.
Call for the reading of the fourth and final ordinance in relation to this matter, authorizing a lease agreement for hay production on properties at the Animal Shelter, Spring Fork Lake, and the Old City Landfill.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-four, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement for hay production on properties at the Animal Shelter, Spring Fork Lake, and Old City Landfill.
Second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for second reading. Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-four, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement for hay production on properties at the Animal Shelter, Spring Fork Lake, and Old City Landfill.
Final passage.
Second. Have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
All in favor.
Seventh item I, I have tonight is as presented during the budget developing process, the city was successful in obtaining a grant to implement several stormwater improvement projects. The grant financial assistance agreement has been received outlining the requirements of the grant. The staff approves of the agreement.
Okay, I have an ordinance authorizing the financial assistance agreement for stormwater improvements. Call for its reading.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-five, an ordinance authorizing a financial assistance agreement for stormwater improvement projects.
Second reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for second reading of this bill. Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-five, an ordinance authorizing a financial assistance agreement for stormwater improvement projects.
Final passage.
Second. I have ready motion and a second for final passage of this bill. Any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
All in favor.
The final item I have tonight is pertaining to wastewater treatment, the central wastewater treatment plant improvement. Um, uh, once again, we want to thank the public for allowing the city to, uh, purchase the sixty million dollar bond necessary for its improvement. So this is the first step in that, and this will be for an agreement with HVR Engineering Incorporated. And these are for the design build plans, uh, that will go towards the improvement of that central wastewater.
Actually, this is the owner's, owner's representative, so to help, to basically represent us in the negotiation on the design bill.
There you go.
Okay, call for the ordinance authorizing the agreement for professional services for the wastewater treatment plant improvements.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-six, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for professional services for wastewater treatment plant improvements.
Second reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for second reading. Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-six, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for professional services for wastewater treatment plant improvements.
Final passage.
Second. Have a motion and a second for final passage of this bill. Any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
All in favor.
That's all I have.
Thank you Chairman Oldham. Uh, next we have community development. Chairman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I have two items this evening, the first of which is nominating the Ozark Music Festival site as a historic landmark. At the beginning of this meeting, a hearing was held regarding the nomination of the site of the nineteen seventy-four Ozark Music Festival as a historic landmark. After carefully reviewing the historic significance of the event, the Sedalia Historic Preservation Commission and staff recommend approval of the resolution in support of the nomination.
Call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution two thousand eighty-five, the resolution nominating the site of the Ozark Music Festival as a historic landmark.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the motion to? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Let's see, and the second item I have this evening is a subrecipient grant agreement for the Paul Bruin Grant. The subrecipient award agreement template for the Paul Bruin Historical Robustization Grant Development and Coordination with the granting agency was approved at the last meeting. Using this template, staff is now working individually with each property owner identified as a successful applicant. Such an agreement has been negotiated with John Katie to fund the project submitted for roofing repair and replacement on the seven oh eight to seven ten South Ohio properties. The total project is estimated to be sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-four cents, with the grant covering fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixteen cents, and the owner covering the balance of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Okay, call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the Paul Bruin Grant subrecipient.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-seven, an ordinance authorizing a Paul Bruin Grant subrecipient grant agreement for repair and replacement of roofing at seven oh eight South Ohio and seven ten South Ohio.
Second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for second reading. Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the Paul Bruin Grant subrecipient grant agreement for repair and replacement of roofing at seven oh eight South Ohio and seven ten South Ohio.
Final passage.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, next we have appointments. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we gather here to make a pivotal decision for the leadership of the Sedalia Police Department. Interim Chief Woolery has shown exceptional dedication to leadership, embodying values we hold dear in our community, safety and well-being. Interim Chief Woolery, please step forward and share your strategic ven- vision for the department detailing your approach to community safety, the challenges ahead, and the innovations you intend to introduce. Following your presentation, we will proceed with the formal reading of your appointment and council's vote. Interim Chief Woolery, the floor is yours.
Thank you Mayor, City Council. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you tonight and present my strategic plan to you. Six years ago, Matt Wirt was promoted to Chief of Police. And when he was promoted, the culture at our agency was very dysfunctional. And over the last six years, under Chief Wirt's leadership, the command staff and the members of the city police department have worked very hard at changing and transferring, forming our agency to an organization of professionalism, a strong skill set, service, accountability, and pride. I've been very blessed to be part of that process and proud of what we have accomplished. My goal as the Chief of Police is to continue what we have been doing and build on that progress. My strategic plan is comprised, uh, of the department as we have built it, our foundation of success, and where we want to move forward. I believe the council is pretty familiar with the quality of the agency that we have, and my strategic plan will go into specific reasons of the agency, of why the agency is, the shape that it's in, and the ways that we wish to continue to grow. Now, the good news is, this presentation should not take any more than twice the amount of time Chief Irwin took. So, now I just have to be better at the clicker, and I think I win. So, overview of the police department. The police department consists of forty-six warrant officers and nine civilian personnel. We have three bure- bureaus and several ancillary units. The Patrol Bureau, the Criminal Investigations Bureau, and the Operations Support Bureau. Officers respond to over thirty-two thousand calls for service a year, each year, with over seven thousand traffic stops and usually over eighteen hundred arrests. Officers in the Uniform Operations Bureau are responsible for answering calls for service and conducting investigations. They also conduct traffic enforcement and engage the community during regular patrol and community policing events. Criminal Investigations Bureau is responsible for investigating all types of criminal offenses. The Criminal Investigations Bureau also has the Crime Resolution Unit, the Evidence Unit, Dare Unit, and Community Policing Unit. The Operations Support Bureau is responsible for department training, fleet management, facilities management, equipment allocation, retention, and records division. As the city of Sedalia changes, the members of the Sedalia Police Department must adapt and change as well. The department structure has been a work in progress over the last five years, and the current, current command staff has been part of designing and implementing these changes. This plan will stress the current department structure and future needs that will be outlined. The Sedalia Police Department has made vast strides over the last five and a half to six years in the quality of our training, our service, our commitment, and the values that we set. The Sedalia Police Department should be comprised of the very best the community has to offer. This is not to say that we're any better than anyone else in the community, but we should represent the best ideals that a community has. And in our community, those ideals are reflected in our core values, our honesty, our integrity, our perseverance, our patience, courage, and resolve. Those are reflected in our core values and in the work that we try and do. So the mission statement and our core values. This is the, the core of who we are at the police department. The Sedalia Police Department is dedicated to serving the citizens of Sedalia by providing the highest quality of law enforcement through honesty, integrity, service, teamwork, diversity, and pride in our agency and community. And quickly broken down, honesty, integrity, at the Sedalia Police Department, we value and expect truth, honesty, and ethical behavior. We demand officers adhere to strong moral principles, and we hold integrity as a path to public trust. Our service, we are dedicated to providing the highest quality of law enforcement through a heart of service and commitment to our community. Our teamwork, as a group of professional officers working together to build a strong police department that protects the community with honor and courage. Diversity, we value respect and embrace diversity within the agency and the community, and our pride. The men and women of the Sedalia Police Department take pride in the department, each other, and our community. Every member of the Sedalia Police Department takes the code of ethics. I'm not going to read the code of ethics because it's going to be a long night anyway. But this, this is something that we all swear to, and it's reflected in our core values and our mission statement. So, a little bit more in-depth breakdown of the different bureaus. The Uniform Operations Bureau is responsible for the patrol function. This is comprised of uniformed officers in clearly marked patrol vehicles who are assigned to jurisdictional areas within the city limits. These officers identify common neat, community needs, provide support and guidance to the community, respond to calls for service, and act as a deterrent to crime, enforce state, local, and federal laws, and respond to emergencies twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The Uniform Operations Bureau consists of four working squads. They work twelve-hour shifts, and they are controlled by a patrol commander, whose primary responsibility is to provide general management, leadership, direction, and control. Each squad is directed by a sergeant who is responsible for the staffing, direction, discipline, and encouragement of the squad. Each squad also has either another sergeant or a corporal assigned to it that is responsible for directing patrol officers in the field and assisting the sergeant with administrative duties, leadership, and discipline. And then additional units within the Operations Bureau consist of the Traffic or DWI unit, which, inside the, the Traffic and DWI unit, it's the focused traffic enforcement, major crash investigations, traffic advisory committee, traffic grant acquisition, focused DWI enforcement, DWI training, and our drug recognition experts with the DRE, DREs, which are court-recognized expert testimony in driving while impaired. They also have the drone unit, the K-9 unit, and the bike unit. So moving into the Criminal Investigations Bureau, Criminal Investigations Bureau investigates crimes thoroughly and with due diligence, evaluates and prepares criminal cases for the appropriate clearance or submission to the prosecutor. The Criminal Investigations Bureau consists of two units, the latent investigation unit and the crime resolution unit. The latent investigation unit is basically the detectives that handle everything from, uh, property damage to homicides. We handle everything in between, uh, in all, in all of those cases. And one of the areas that we do at the Sedalia Police Department with our latent investigation unit, I have four detectives. Two of them are full-time. They don't rotate out, and the other two are rotating detective positions. So they'll work on patrol, and then they'll come up for a couple of years and, and, uh, and detectives, and they'll work there, and then they rotate back out, and they take those skills to the road with them. Oftentimes, those detectives become field training officers. So as we hire new officers, these officers are automatically trained not only on what a normal police officer would learn, but they're also trained on how to investigate crimes, specifically detailed investigations. They know how to do subpoenas, um, preservation requests, search warrants. All of those things can be handled on the patrol level because of this rotating detective, uh, program that we have. And anytime another agency calls me, I stress very hard for them to try and adopt this program and do. It also gives patrol officers something else to do besides just working patrol, which also helps with longevity and, and keeping officers. And then the Crime Resolution Unit is comprised of two drug enforcement detectives and two community policing detectives. The CRE, which is short for Crime Resolution Unit, utilizes problem-oriented policing that stresses proactive problem solving instead of reactive crime fighting. The methodologies used by the CRE transcend normal boundaries utilized by law enforcement. The CRE focuses on solutions that involves all areas of city government to address issues outside of criminal enforcement that affect our community. So we've been doing the holistic approach that we've been discussing in the department head meetings of how the city can come together to make the community better. So it's not just about arresting people. When we go to a house that's a drug house, everybody in a community knows which house is dealing drugs. They also know how that house usually looks. So instead of just doing a search warrant on that house, arresting the people inside, collecting the evidence, and leaving, the house is still in the same condition. We involve any other city departments, whether it's code enforcement or if there's elderly folks that are inside that, that need help, whatever the case is, how do we attach or attack the problem and fix it for the betterment of the community? And just arresting people doesn't always fix the problem. Additional units within the Criminal Investigations Bureau consist of the following: Crime Scene Investigation Unit, the Evidence Unit, the Dare Unit, and the School Resource Officer. Moving on to Operations Support Bureau, Operations Support Bureau is responsible for sustaining the department function. This bureau is responsible for the maintenance of all the department facilities, which would include police headquarters and the range and our storage building. The Operations Support Bureau also procures all departmental equipment, so from the vehicles to our weapons, ammunition, uniform, technology, that all is purchased and, uh, processed through the Operations Support Bureau. So basically, any function that supports our agency. The Operations Support Bureau is also responsible for our training, and we host two end services through our training, which I'll get into also a little bit. through our training, which I'll get into also a little bit later. We host those each year that officers can go to, plus they can request to go to other training individually that we also budget for. The Operations Support Bureau has a Records Unit. Records is responsible for maintaining all reports and associated documents, and the Records Supervisor and OSB Commander are responsible for ensuring the department is compliant with all requests from the Sunshine Law. Records coordinates Missouri incident-based reporting, which is MIBRs, to the Missouri State Highway Patrol. All of our records have to be tracked, and that happens through that unit. And so, other specialty units inside of OSB are the Training Unit, the Special Response Team, Community Support Officer, and the Technical Support Services. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about training, but while I'm on that, training is a highlight of our agency. It's also another core structure of what we do and what we stress. So, the in-service training I'm talking about, we have, through just in-service, which is the basic bare-bones minimum that an officer at the Sedalia Police Department is going to have, they're going to have twice the hours that is required by the state for a police officer to have to keep our certification. So, to keep our certification, Missouri POST, which is Police Officer Standards and Training, they dictate that we have twenty-four hours of continuing education every year. And we more than double that with just our in-service training every year. Because we believe that having, and this is hands-on developmental training that's either in the classroom or in scenario-based training. Because if you don't have scenario-based training, when you're in the field and you need to make split-second decisions, and you haven't been practicing those split-second decisions, then they're a lot more difficult to do. And I'm going to give an example of this. About five years ago, five or six years ago, we started getting officers that were trained in Gracie Jiu-Jitsu ground fighting. And that's training that we have progressively done every year in in-service. So, we build on that, and you have, we get new officers in this time, so it has to be at a level that someone who's never had ground fighting experience is going to be comfortable with, or they already knew that they can learn, and not only learn here, but utilize in the field and continue growing that. And last year, we had an officer who responded to a subject who wished to commit suicide by cop. He had committed a crime, called the crime man himself, gave a description of himself, and said that he had a gun. He did not have a gun, but he had a knife. And when the officer went to arrest him, they ended up fighting over the knife, went to the ground, and the officer, who had not had specific ground fighting skills before, was confident on the ground, not having to go to lethal force, and used his Gracie Jiu-Jitsu leverage and getting the suspect's arm under control. The suspect did end up breaking the knife, trying to stab him in the side. It did not penetrate his vest, but in this situation, he was able to use the progressive training that we learned and that we instill to resolve that situation without going to deadly force. Of course, every situation is different, and, you know, having the subject on the ground or they weren't mobile probably comes into play there. But being able to make those decisions and make smart decisions and right decisions at the time is one of the primary focuses we have in our training culture and environment that we try and instill in all of our officers and have them prepared. And speaking of culture, I'd like to talk about our department culture. An organization's culture is created through a pattern of shared experiences that members have learned to solve problems while adapting to both external and internal changes. As members successfully complete these challenges, they teach new members the correct way to perceive, think, feel, and behave in an organization. It's kind of a fancy way of saying they figure out what works, they figure out what's going to get praised, they figure out what's going to get disciplined, and they kind of figure out what's modeled throughout the agency. And that defines your culture. An organization can have a culture that is an aid to leadership in moving the department in a positive direction, unifying members' understanding of the organization's mission, goals, and appropriate means to achieve success. The challenge in police leadership in establishing a positive culture is to establish a positive culture in our organization. This can include the actual building that officers work in, the equipment they're given, the expectations of officers, professionalism, and appearance and action. Core values and clearly defined standards must be set in the department policy that are positively enforced through training evaluations and consistent accountability. That's kind of the key statement to the whole thing on department culture. Core values and clearly defined standards must be set in department policy, positive enforcement through training, evaluations, and consistent accountability. A police agency is going to have values. It's the leader's responsibility to ensure they are the correct values. The core values should be reflected in the department culture: honesty, integrity, service, teamwork, diversity, and pride. Branding our core values into the culture of our department will be a goal moving forward. This will start with visual representation in our department, where members will see it every day, and will continue through mentoring and officer development. Speaking of officer development, as stated before, the men and women of the Sedalia Police Department are our greatest asset. Over the last five years, leadership has worked on officer development through the lead-by-exemple methodology, where officers see supervisors and command staff as coaches and mentors. This has been an effective strategy and one that we will continue. Specifically, we'll continue with training through active engagement and practical learning rather than primary focus on web-based learning. So, again, our training comes into play on officer development. While training is, the way we do it, is more expensive, it's more time-intensive, and it's a lot more difficult to get those programs together, it is essential in having that curriculum for the service and development of the officers. Officers are provided clear guidelines through our Lexipol Policy Management System. This policy management system is legally based and updated to keep department members current with state statutes, case law, and federal law, along with best practices. Officers are consistently tested through daily training bulletins on our Lexipol policy. So, just once we release a policy, and our policy manual is hundreds and hundreds of pages, it's long, so officers sign off on that, and then they get daily training bulletins as well, that they actually have to read the policy again and then take a test that demonstrates that they understand the policy, and when they do that, electronically signs off. So, we have accountability that they've seen the policy, they understand the policy, and they've been tested on the policy. By having officers who are well-trained and well-supervised, they are able to be given autonomy in performing their mission. Officers are encouraged to use discretion, bless you. Officers are encouraged to using discretion to finding solutions when working through community problems. So, we give them the rules to follow, we give them the guidance, the training on how to do it, and then they're given leeway on how to do it as long as they stay within the guidelines. And having that autonomy, I think, is very good for retention, officer satisfaction, and also it opens up different avenues on how community problems can be solved. Because I may not always have the best idea. In fact, I can tell you, I don't always have the best idea. But somebody in my agency, if they have a better idea, then we want to hear it and see how they did it, and then consider moving forward that way. So, always being open to the changes that are improvements is another goal that our command staff has. So, while it's important to have job satisfaction as a patrolman, another area of focus we have is on our leadership team and supervisor development. Our first-line supervisors are sergeants and corporals, and each patrol shift is typically assigned one of each. Corporals and sergeants are both first-line supervisors, but the sergeant is instrumental in reinforcing the positive culture, expectations, and work quality. The sergeant is the spearhead for management and responsible for ensuring decisions, policies, and initiatives from command level are implemented on the shift level. So, if I'm not there at two in the morning, there is a sergeant and/or a corporal who is there, who is running the shift and ensuring that all standards are being met and that officers are doing what they're supposed to. All of our sergeants attend first-line supervisor training, and they also, all of them go to the West Point Police Leadership Model, which is a three-week, high-intensity leadership class. Corporals, they focus on field operations and assist the sergeants with supervision, direction, and discipline of shift personnel. Command staff has been mentoring sergeants by assigning them to the Professional Development Sergeant position, which works directly with command staff. They go to department, or not department head meetings, they go to command staff meetings. They work on special projects throughout the agency that needs to be done, and the idea being that it kind of broadens their horizon on what they're looking at. Because as a patrolman, I was the same way. I kind of had a narrow scope. This is my job, I go do my job. And the higher you go in the agency, the broader that view gets. So, this idea is to bring them in, and they get to see how command staff solves problems, how they run the agency, what the leadership ideals are, and how the situation goes from our level to their level, instead of just saying, "Why do we have to do this extra stuff? This seems silly." This is a good way for them to see how this process starts. We never just sit around thinking of new ways that we can make their life miserable. If they're doing something, there's a reason that we have to do it, and this kind of gives them the opportunity of seeing what those ways are and the process that that takes place in making those decisions and the direction that we go. Historically, this position has only been available to sergeants, and we are now extending it out to corporals as well, so that we're moving the leadership direction and the leadership view even lower into the ranks for development throughout the agency. And then commander development. We currently have three commanders with the intention of promoting a fourth: Uniform Operations Commander, the Operations Support Bureau Commander, and the Criminal Investigations Bureau Commander. The final commander position will be a senior commander. The senior commander will assist the Chief of Police with all operations of the department, direct supervision of the other commanders and bureaus, public appearances, and representation of the Office of the Chief of Police in my absence. Each commander runs their respective bureaus and performs the duties associated with those bureaus. The only part of their, this is only part of their overall responsibilities. Members of command staff deal with every problem that arises in the agency outside of calls for service and investigations, sometimes those as well. So, commanders assist with staffing issues, the hiring process, discipline, sometimes the termination process, and solving any problem that arises in the workplace. The command team works together to ensure the operation of the Police Department functions efficiently. All commanders are sent to Administrative Officers Course or the, oh, what's the one? Commander Hendrix with the other one? Well, the Illinois School of Police Staffing. That's the one Matt Work went to. I didn't go to that one. So, but they're all very good schools, they're about three months long, and they're intensive. Commander Hendrix and I went to the Administrative Officers Course at the University of Louisville, and it's the best law enforcement class I've ever been to. Actually, it's one of the best classes I've ever been to. It's a monetary investment, and it's a time investment to send commanders to this level, but it bears fruit throughout their entire, the rest of their career and for the agency. All commanders have also been through the West Point Leadership Model. We took those classes with the sergeant level and one corporal, so that we all can work together on moving forward in the same direction on the management and the leadership function. And then our Training Unit, talk a little bit more about training. Over the last five years, it has been a very strong focus from command staff to build our Training Unit with seasoned and knowledgeable instructors. So, like I said, when Chief Work took over the agency, our training focus shifted, and all of our training resources, or the majority of them, went to creating trainers within our organization, so that we could not only train our department, but other departments throughout central Missouri. And we currently have over twenty-five certified, twenty certified trainers that are certified through POST that train at our agency. These instructors are part of our Training Unit, and the Training Unit works with command staff to envision training needs for the next year and devise a service training curriculum that is tailor-made to meet our upcoming needs within the department. So, if we have an issue that we see is either a weak point or something that we see trending that's going to be a problem, then our Training Unit figures out a training curriculum to deal with that issue so that the officers are prepared for it, or if we've got a gap somewhere, we can fill that gap in. We conduct in-service training every spring and fall. I talked about the twenty-four hours with each session, so we more than double what is necessary. And every year, we budget a well-funded training account and justify that expense through the abilities and knowledge that our officers demonstrate. So, having well-trained officers and the autonomy to make good decisions during adverse situations is our goal. However, it's not just a goal for our agency. As I said before, we offer our service, our in-service training program free of charge to all law enforcement agencies that wish to participate. We also advise and train other departments on how they can create their own training program that's similar to ours and promote their department and their community as well. Because quality police officers is instrumental to our profession regardless of where they're at, whether they're in Sedalia, Clinton, Warrensburg, doesn't matter. We want good police officers in the profession regardless. And I can tell you that when we bring officers in here and train them, unlike other places, we don't try and steal their people. If I send an officer to training, anytime I send an officer to training, someone tries to steal them. If I send them on vacation, someone tries to steal them. So, retaining our officers is a top priority. We don't do that to other agencies. So, if they come in, we train them, we give them the information, and make sure that they're prepared to go out and do good work. If they're happy with what they see, and they really like our culture in our department and they want to apply, we don't talk them out, but we do not try and steal and coach other departments' people. So, new initiatives, I can kind of gloss over this a little bit, because some of these new initiatives you all have already accepted in the budget. You saw the value of, and we're going to, we'll be starting on these initiatives almost immediately. So, the first one is the Field Mobile Software that is going to really increase the efficiency of our officers and their function. This is going to help because officer burnout is a serious issue, and our calls for service and the short staffing that we have, and that we have had, we've been short-staffed, I would guess, maybe ten years was the last time we were fully staffed, perhaps eight. I know in the last six to seven, we have been understaffed, and that starts to take a toll. So, we've been looking at solutions of trying to make better efficiency of the officer's time and how they can get to calls faster and be more efficient. Because the amount of paperwork that officers have to do, it's kind of mind-boggling on how much that is. So, the Field Mobile Software, there's several different software elements that all kind of culminate together for an overall function. All of our, all of our police reporting, our CAD, our records management is all through Tyler Technologies, and this is also through Tyler. It kind of helps encapsulate everything and make it more efficient for us. So, the Field Mobile Software will have immediate updates on incidents or calls. Officers can silently request information or backup without alerting the people they're dealing with of what's going on. Officers can have situational awareness of where other officers are on scene, along with map views of their locations if they need that. Officers have immediate access to information such as warrants, gate access codes, hazardous materials that might be on site, and other hazardous situations specific to their call location. So, if I go to a house and I know that there's an aggressive dog or aggressive people, that could also be in the call. Command staff can have twenty-four-hour push notifications and alerts on ongoing calls. So, we can set that up. If it's certain types of calls, command staff can get immediate notification that officers are responding to this call and alert us to what's going on. If we need to respond, when we're responding, we can get updates throughout the app, so if an officer enters in something that's going on, an update, we would get that automatically. We would also get real-time positioning of where those units are. So, if we're going to a hostage situation or anything that's going to be tactical, so I don't have to take up radio time asking the sergeant where, you know, what's the route I need to come in, I can see where the cars are, or if they have the device on their person, I can see where the officers are on scene, and we can make a detailed plan on that. So, accompanying that is the Public Safety Analytics, and this is all of our data, all of our call data, all of our calls for service, accidents, arrests, case reports, and accident and, you know, arrest reports are just examples of all the data that would go into the analytics. This allows law enforcement to perform analysis. This allows law enforcement to perform analysis of crime or incidents across different periods. We can immediately track crime trends and locations to implement tactical strategies to address the crimes. So they can create kind of the hotspots map that you saw Chief Irwin have. We can get those immediately. All kinds of things we can get immediately. It also has a Citizen Connect Portal that allows citizens to have easy access to data to answer questions about criminal activity without exposing sensitive information. So it's another method of transparency that whenever the system gets set up, that the public can get in and see where crime trends are within the city of Sedalia. By promoting more communication and transparency, citizens can use the online portal, become more informed about what's going on in our community, and this will also relieve support staff with less information requests, hopefully. So not only would the officers have more efficient use of their time, but the records employees might get less requests for data and things, if citizens can access that immediately. And then partnered with that is the Data Collect Mobile. This is set up so when an officer responds to a scene or a crime, they can activate on the device that they're en route, and this program will immediately start filling out their report. It will fill out the time the report came in, it will fill out the weather, it will fill out where they're going, any of the call information that dispatch took can automatically populate into the system. So if I get there and I start investigating the crime, and Commander Hendricks shows up to assist me, and there's evidentiary photos that need to be taken, he can log into my call, start taking evidentiary photos, and those will automatically download into my case. So right now, when an officer takes photos, they have to go in, download the call into the computer, and then transfer those photos onto a disc or a DVD or something to keep it in evidence. All of this happens immediately. So this is another tool that we're hoping really helps us establish quicker times, less times that officers are writing reports, it's more times that they can be out working. And then the last piece of this is the License Plate Readers that you all are familiar with, which will be in strategic places around the city, so we can know if we have a major incident somewhere with the type of vehicle it is or the plate, then this can catch that and give us real-time information of where the suspects are. Another area of focus that we're going to be looking at is officer recruitment. We're getting there, we're almost done. To meet the community needs in the future, officer recruitment will be essential. And the city of Sedalia is growing and expanding, and we're going to need to be able to meet those needs, and the department's going to grow as well. Recruiting quality candidates is a primary focus. To manage this task, we'll start with officer recruit, we started an officer recruitment unit that we've already started. We have a sergeant, a corporal, and several officers that are definitely dedicated to bringing the best possible folks into our agency, and our goal is to get fully staffed. Our goal is the same goal as every other agency, so we're fighting against every other agency to do this. But our recruitment unit has already started and implemented some kind of innovative ideas to, when they go to recruitment events, we just had business cards made up with a QR code that can be scanned by an applicant immediately, which will take them to an application process through Google Docs. They can fill that out right there, and then they can attach the recruiter to that document. So if I get your application, that attaches me to that application, you've got my contact information, and I will walk you through that process of getting the full background packet, everything filled out and sent to Tina, so you've always, until a warm handoff is done. So right now, when people fill out an application, the process takes a while because of the background, you know, the police personnel board has to interview, and it's just, my process is nine months. They're not normally this long, they're not normally that long. But it's long enough, especially for people that want a job. So this keeps us in direct connection with these folks all the time, and helps us basically keep them on the line, and we can also answer questions about the agency, and basically keep them wanting to come here instead of going somewhere else. So another part of that is having a comprehensive salary and benefit plan to attract new applicants to Sedalia, along with our department culture that promotes service, officers, well-being, and positive leadership. So our benefit plan right now is, needless to say, better than it's ever been. And I've been here quite a while, and I can tell you that throughout most of my career, our salary package would kind of work like this. You would start, and then whenever we fell far enough behind the market value of police officers, we had trouble with recruiting, then there would be a pay increase that would basically incentivize new officers to come in and apply with us. And then the tenured officers, or the officers with longevity, would get somewhere around a 4% bump perhaps above them. So if you've been here 15 years, you're now making 4% more than a 15-day person. So actually, when Kelvin became City Administrator, if the rest of council doesn't know this, you developed a pay plan for officers that has a starting point and a endpoint, and officers can see where they are. And each year, when council approves, we're able to move up that scale and stay competitive and get officers into our department. So, I mean, your culture and your training and your equipment will get you so far, but ultimately, you have to have a comprehensive and competitive pay scale to have officers that want to come here. So, I mean, you can, I was homegrown, and we concentrate on homegrown people that have family here, and that can work as well, but you can't rely on having a whole department of folks that are from Sedalia. So we try and recruit them and get them into, get them into our agency. And then the other key, once you get them here, is keeping them. Because while it's important to get new officers, it's even more important to keep the ones you already have. Because unlike new recruits, these officers are already trained, they're already vetted, they've already demonstrated they can make good decisions in the field. If they didn't, they wouldn't still be here. So those are the folks that, a strong focus on how to keep these people in our agency is something that we definitely look at. As a department leader, it's important to concentrate on the reasons that employees leave. One reason employees leave is conflict with a management decision. And while every effort should be made to explain the process or need for a decision, the simple reality is, not all management decisions are going to be popular with everyone. And good leaders make genuine efforts to reach out, reach an understanding with the officer, and however, the good of the agency has to come over the top at the end and supersede what the officer's personal wants are. But good management, working with the officers to keep them here, even if they don't agree with something that they have to do. Another reason officers leave is to pursue job opportunities outside of law enforcement or positions in other agencies that have a better benefit package. And we've lost several officers to agencies that pay more. Our training is very good, officers love to snatch, or departments love to snatch up our people. They know that they're getting quality people, and that's, we're kind of a target for that. And the third reason officers leave is often associated with job stresses. Being understaffed, along with the nature of police work and the high expectations of our department, results in officer burnout. We're not going to lower our expectations, so we're looking at other ways to kind of fight the battle on officer burnout and officer stress. And that brings us into officer wellness, and we really are almost done. The city of Sedalia offers an employee assistance program, an EAP, that has not been very well-received through law enforcement. Historically, police culture is not very acceptable to officers in crisis. When I started, and actually probably till not that long ago, unfortunately, officers' mental health wasn't really something you talked about. You certainly weren't going to tell anybody if you were going to use the EAP program, and if you did, you only had a couple of visits. So we have devised a better program with Shannon in HR to where we now have specific therapists and counselors that work with law enforcement and emergency services, and they can also have as many visits as they need. So this, and we also have changed our culture within the agency. We have an Officer Wellness Coordinator who, Detective Cherry, I'll go ahead and say his name. If he knows that an officer is having issues, he will work with that officer to make sure that they get treatment or they have everything they need to move forward. And we have after-action reports after major incidents to where everybody gets together, and we look for indicators or factors that an officer might be having some issues with the calls that they went on. We're also looking at ways to offer less formal assistance to officers in the times that they need it the most. We're working with the Missouri Crisis Intervention Team to access the Cortico Wellness Application. This can provide confidential help to officers 24/7 over the phone with a multitude of services. So if an officer wants to actually Skype and have a video conference with a counselor or a therapist, they can do that. If they want something that's a little less formal, they can get information about mental health or dealing with stress. So if they have a significant incident on a call that night, and they go home and it's bothering them that much, they don't really want to take it to the level of going to a counselor, they can get immediate help at home or even right after the call if they want to through this app. And this is something that we're preparing to roll out within the next month. I'm also contracting with Dawn Morris, who is a licensed practicing counselor, or yeah, an LPC, who is the wellness coordinator at the Johnson County Sheriff's Department, and she's going to do wellness checks in our agency. So she'll do this of all commissioned officers. She'll come in and meet with every officer that we have, and normally, officers wouldn't be very receptive of that, but Dawn is a known face around our agency. She's helped us through several traumatic events, and when we have these after-action reports, then, or after-action plans and decompression sessions, Dawn comes in and leads those for us. So hopefully, if we do have officers that are suffering from mental stress and fatigue, we can identify these problems early and help them kind of deal with them in a positive way. And the last plan that I have that I want to present tonight is preparation. Due to the retirement and loss of senior officers to other agencies, or just retirement of these officers, we have a pretty young department. However, I believe we have an excellent department, and my goal is to build up the next generation of leaders. I will have a very new command staff, and my goal is to groom this command staff, the members to run the agency when I leave. I'll be here 29 years in May, and I've been in law enforcement for about 32 years. So I plan to be here for a while longer, however, my time is finite. So my goal is to have a command staff that is prepared to take over whenever I go. And I've spoken with Commander Hendricks about this as well, on developing the new leaders that come in. It is an important part of our leadership and loyalty to the city to develop the people that replace you. And historically, it's been my experience that when somebody gets the job at Chief of Police, they're pretty territorial of that position. They handle the council meetings, they handle the politics side, they handle the budget. I understand all of those things, however, I don't really have the time or the luxury to do that, because we are going to need to develop. I've got two brand-new commanders and one commander that's been here about four years. So seeing them is probably going to be a pretty steady factor whenever you see me in budget hearings and council meetings. I also want the commanders to interact with the community members and get an idea of how to navigate outside influences and promoting the agency outside of the walls. So I want qualified, competent leaders who can step in and move our agency forward. I believe this is the cornerstone of my job responsibilities. So in conclusion, the Sedalia Police Department will remain committed to serving the citizens of Sedalia. We have successfully shifted from reactive proactive policing, which is evident in our department's structure and effectiveness, and we will continue to strive in these endeavors. Our new initiatives will improve our proactive function and help us move forward in a more technological footing. This will reduce officer's time completing reports and bring relevant information to all members quickly. Through effective leadership and management, our department has a strong ethos that is reflected in our core values of honesty, integrity, service, teamwork, diversity, and pride. We have an established and simple decision matrix that is the backbone of our department culture. And I learned this from Chief Lichhour back in early 2000s, whenever he started mentoring me to rise up above my narrow patrolman view. So anytime I have made a decision as a leader or in our agency, this is the goal of the matrix that we do. What is good for the community, what is good for the city of Sedalia, what is good for the Sedalia Police Department, what is good for the officer, and then what is good for me, in that order. So if you're presented with a problem, if you look at it from that scope and you follow that decision matrix, you're probably going to be right most of the time. At least your heart's in the right place, and that goes a long way, too. So I thank you all very much for taking the time to listen to my strategic plan and for this opportunity to run the agency as the interim Chief of Police. It's been one of the greatest honors of my career, and I thank you for having the faith and trust in me to do it. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Council, for the appointee? Having heard that call for reading the appointment?
To members of the City Council from Mayor Andrew Dawson regarding new appointment to position the Chief of Police, David Wilbury.
Motion to approve.
In council discussion regarding the motions on the floor.
On the basis, he gets one presentation a year.
Goal!
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Now we'd like to invite up your wives.
My wife, Amy.
Didn't you get the badge on you?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
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 Congratulations.
I do want to stress that I've been super-nice Bahamian this week, because this needle is very long and fairly sharp.
All right. Thank you all very much. Next, we have our liquor licenses. Call for reading the liquor license.
We have two renewals tonight. Angela Lee doing business at Casey's General Store, number 4277, at 1101 North Limit for packaged liquor and Sunday sales, and Nicole Walker doing businesses Broadway Liquor and Smokes at 2610 West Broadway for packaged liquor and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and block for a second. In council discussion regarding the motion. Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Now, have you been any miscellaneous items for the City Council or City Administrator?
Well, you have an opportunity to be heard tomorrow, so get out and vote, and it's great to see a good crowd here tonight. Appreciate it. Appreciate y'all coming here. Thank you.
Well, Matt, I want to say a couple of things. I want to address my personal one, okay? I've gotten some messages pretty nasty. I just put my phone down, turned it off. Someone listened to it. I love today in Missouri. I love being up here on the council doing the right thing for the people. Somebody got up here last week. Do you really know what ordinance is you're passing? This is my, every weekend, I get one of these packets every weekend before the council. Every member here reads this. Every ordinance we pass tonight is in this packet. Every ordinance. I know what I'm passing when I pass it. If I don't like it, it's a no. I'm not a rubber-stamp man. The second thing I want to bring up is the two-year to four-year deal. I heard that we snuck this on the ballot. We did not sneak this on the ballot. This was put on the ballot before any of us council members even paid our money to run again. If we'd been on four-year terms the last 11 years, because this would have been an off year, the city would have saved $65,000 putting names on the ballot. That's a lot of money. I talked to Fire Chief, we were in conversation, and he said, yeah, he said that would buy all the fire hoses for every fire truck in this community. Then I heard a guy say, well, the reason the two years is so, you the legislature's on two years. Yeah, they are, I agree. And he said, the reason they went that way in 1992, when they went to that with along with term limits, is that way, they go home and they talk to their people, okay? I live in my ward. I'm there 24/7. Call me. If you've got a complaint, call me. Guarantee you, everybody that has called me, I've gone out and talked to them. I've gone out and looked at their problems, then bring it back to staff. I believe that four years would give us an opportunity to build a relationship with our staff. You can shake your head, Kevin, I don't care. You've got to build a rapport with your staff so they know what's going on. If you don't want it, don't vote for it. It's no skin off my nose. Hell, I could, I've run, I've been on the election twice. Got appointed, then I had to run to finish out a term, and here it is a year later, I'm running for a two-year term. Unopposed both times. I also believe that four-year term would bring people out to get on the ballot. So I'm going to get off my soapbox. I want to thank you for your time and go out and vote tomorrow, and anybody that's interested, maybe I'll see you Saturday down at the Sodalia Derek Car Show because that's going to happen, and that's for our kids in this community.
Do you, anyone else from council like your comments?
Great Easter celebration at the courthouse Saturday. Beautiful music. Beautiful, beautiful music. The Flavik Community put that on. It was really a nice presentation and certainly the city appreciates.
You ready? You ready, Josh?
Yeah. Last council meeting, we had a had a nice crowd here. Again, had a nice crowd here. We had several comments, and some of the comments during that meeting were that you would like answers, and some of them, some of them were questions. So what I've done is is between since from that that time period, I went back, I listened to the recordings, I captured every one of the comments and did the research, and so I thought I would give you all the benefit of that research. The first ones are the first couple of comments were from the budget hearing, and although they didn't really relate to the budget hearing, but they were public comments, so I I pulled them together. Estella Frazier, 405 West Henry, had the comment that they, she had a safety concern. People on the north side have nowhere to go for tornado. The shelter is locked and has water in it. So as way of research, I did some research or did took some action. The storm shelters that were that were funded through the grants from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, are managed by Pettis County with the assistance of an ongoing operating cost grants to cover a portion of these costs. We have passed along your concerns to the Emergency Management Director and the Pettis County Commissioners. Likewise, the city of Sodalia stands ready to assist in any way we can. The EMA Director responded back asking for who made the comment so that they could reach out to get more specifics, which was provided. They believe that they have resolved the issues that that they were aware of. Likewise, Presiding Commissioner Taylor responded to me that he met up with the individual that made the comment right after the meeting, so I think there was some more information provided to them. Elena Bogus Reed, 802 Missouri, made the comment that we need a fire station on the north side, especially with the Viaduct closed. And again, you all sit through this, the the presentation, but council directed staff to gather more information and to continue to look for solutions for all emergency response issues with the Viaduct closed. You all heard the presentation that was a result of that for one, and we continue to work on that. She also made the comment that Loretta Emerson lives on Jefferson. She is old, and if a fire, she could lose her life. Response, we agree. We are working diligently to find solutions. Also, she made the comment, as President of NAACP, we need your help. We deserve to be safe, too. As a response, I couldn't agree more. Everybody's life and safety is the utmost utmost concern. Dan Welch, 4191 South Kentucky, we have a full electric home, wanted a backup generator, called two generator providers, and they said they don't do business in Sodalia since they make you jump through too many hoops. I'm going to combine that with his next comment. He said he also has a window cleaning business and hears this from many different businesses. As a response, we have heard these concerns and follow up on the ones that we have enough specifics to do so. We have found instances where how things were presented were not in keeping with good customer service. We fully admit that, we own that, we are working diligently to correct it. Council remains committed to public safety, so staff is working to stay within this framework and find a healthy balance. We have found some instances where, again, we certainly could have done better and have taken indefinite steps to correct. We appreciate the opportunity to investigate specific examples so that we can find ways to improve. Diane Simon, Brockman Avenue, Coal Camp, she made the comment that the amendment to add 972,000 to the current budget, current year budget later in the agenda, and she said, is this budget based on the revised amount, meaning the current budget that we have, if it was revised? So the response is, the short answer is yes. The budget process, starting with the individual department's strategic plan presentations to council starting in October, lay out the basis for the overall strategic planning session in early January. During this session, council sets the general direction and priorities for the city. Based on this direction, staff then generates a proposed budget. In preparing this proposal, staff uses three years' worth of history for comparison and then adjusts to the new initiatives and priorities set by council. Each department's proposal is then reviewed line by line in great detail with the mayor, finance director, city administrator administration, and often the council committee chair. This reason, the results and major decision items are then presented to council during the regular meetings as well as special work sessions from February through March. She also made the comment, also, the sales tax was down. What do you foresee for the next year? The response, the short answer is 4% over the projected this current year or past year. As in past years, during the bit budget process and end-up analysis of the historical trends and economic conditions was presented to council on February 21, 2024. Council meetings are recorded and links are created on the city's webpage. Anyone interested in why council adopted this as the projected revenue amount for the upcoming fiscal year should review that presentation. Concerned about, she also made the comment that she concerned about adding that much this late in the year. The response, this is a little bit misleading to interpret it in this way. To get an accurate picture of what is being disclosed, one needs to look further at the details and be aware of the background that brings us to this point. First, there are several projects that are multi-year projects. Even though we do not expect to spend all of the funds for the project in the year, the appropriation must be there to obligate the fund, in other words, entered into the contract. So even though we're only planning on spending $500,000 of a million-dollar project, we have to have the appropriation of the million-dollar project. Similarly, with long lead times on many items now, we have to have the appropriation level to place the order, even if we do not expect to receive them in the line item until next year. Therefore, the projected expenditures may be much less, but we have to leave the appropriated amount. For many of these items, they are grant-funded. We do not earn and therefore thereby recognize the grant funds until the project is complete or the items are received. $358,000 of the net budget amendment is represented by grant funding recognition timing, i.e. pushed to the next year. So the next item, net sales and use taxes were less than budgeted. We track these trends very closely and present an update monthly to council during open council meetings to keep them informed. We budgeted a 4% increase, and as of the last monthly trend report, they were running 3.8%. So we were 0.2% under what our budget. The net with budget, net reduction reflected in the budget amendment was $286,930 of that $972,000. Finally, on the third item or third area, one expenditure, on the expenditure side, a significant amount was in the enterprise fund, primarily the sewer department for large, large repairs on aging equipment. This totals $380,000, which is 3.4% of the sewer budget. The above items account for more than the 1.7% overall budget amendment net amount. In actuality, we project to be under budget by $542,481 in the general fund, which is a favorable variance of 3.1%. Further, the shifts from one area to another have been discussed and disclosed during council meetings and through monthly financial statements. Next, we have the good and welfare. We have several comments made there. Gary Lowball, 821 South Arlington, Washington Street Bridge needs attention now. Response, staff went into action the day we were notified by the bridge experts from MoDOT. Within a week, the city had identified a program with MoDOT that has on-call engineers specializing in bridges, contacted one such firm, engaged them, and they did their initial site visit and assessment. That was all done within one week of being notified from MoDOT. We continue to work with them to provide us a solution that will allow us to reopen the bridge as soon as safely, with emphasis on safely possible. Kevin Lujan, 408 West 22nd, made some comments. He was talking to the audience, announcing he was a reporter for when to review and ask for any stories of interest, and gave his phone number and email address. He went on to say that he also serves as President of Pachyderm and invited Councilwoman Marshall and Councilwoman Bogus to a meeting to discuss the second ward. He also is, also, he is working with the Attorney General and is scheduling training on the sunshine law and on how to access public records, and he would make a presentation during the Pachyderm meeting. Also went on to say that they meet every Friday at noon at the Hecarri Community Center. As a response, since those comments were directed to the audience, no responses was researched or given. Ernestine Fletcher, 421 East Howard, was wondering if any roadwork on Howard or any east streets. As a response, we ask that everyone please continue to report any roadwork needs. Crews are out year-round, weather-dependent, to fill cracks and potholes and to repair excavations. Also, during the budgeting process, staff reviews the roads that are in the most need of complete resurfacing with council. Council then prioritizes this list. This becomes the basis for the allocation of funding through the budgeting process. A couple of years ago, the city purchased the equipment to bring in-house resurfacing projects. This equipment has already paid for itself, so we are now able to spread the available dollars further to get more blocks done each year. This year, when considering all of the priorities for the half-cent capital improvement sales tax, $925,000 was allocated to materials only for street resurfacing projects. Of this amount, $110,000 or 44% was allocated to projects east of Ohio, i.e. east addresses. Harry Hoferd, 1408 South Barrett, made the comment that ladies came in shop, in his shop today concerned about the bridge. I'm going to tie that or combine that with the next comment or, I'm sorry. That comment has been addressed in in earlier comments. Again, I can go back and review those for anybody that wants to. His second comment is that he is tired of the bickering between the city and the county. Response, agree. City council will not turn its back on first, its first responsibility to keeping citizens safe, though. Beyond that, the city continues to work for the benefit of the citizens, and often, the best way to do that is through joint efforts with other governments, including the county. Okay, his next comment was, why can't we tone out the county fire department? As a response, a common misconception, since the Pettis County Fire Protection District Number One, Pettis County, has county in its name, some assume they cover the whole county. They collect from taxpayers within their district to provide fire protection to those taxpayers. Thereby, emergency dispatch protocols are set up to send the fire department covering any particular area. Now, with that said, as is common, neighboring fire departments have mutual aid agreements. These mutual aid agreements are designed to allow each department to request assistance as needed. Therefore, it is a good question, and the answer is yes. The Sodalia Fire Department can and would request assistance from Pettis County Fire Protection District Number One if they would be able to help. Unfortunately, though, at the present time, it is our understanding that this fire station is not staff and has no living quarters to be staff 24/7. Further, of the staff the district has, they are only on duty eight hours per day on weekdays. Also, if you look at the travel distance from this station to the residents in Sodalia, the staff 24/7 fire stations of the Sodalia Fire Department are closer. Even if a train is blocking all of the crossings through the city, the 16th Street Station is closer to many of these residents. Therefore, if we simply toned out the fire district, it is highly unlikely they would reach someone in need even as fast as the Sodalia Fire, let alone soon, even if a train was blocking all of the crossings. Again, though, this is a good thought, and we appreciate the suggestion. Staff continues to explore all options to include how could we work with the district. David Goodson, 1640 Hedge Apple Drive, made the comment, Diane made points about the budget. We should have dialogue instead of just looking at us. Would like to know about the $900,000 budget amendment. Entertain dialogue to answer questions. As a response, yeah, we heard you. Here's the answers, the answers up above on the the budget. He also made the comment, great idea about having the county respond to fires. Again, see the response above or about the Pettis County Fire Protection District Number One responding to fires. He then said, made a comment that contractors are not wanting to work in Sodalia. The architect he is working with made a comment that he does not, doesn't care if he ever does another job in Sodalia. Response, I would enjoy the opportunity to meet with him or anyone else with this sentiment. Again, though, this is a good thought, and we appreciate the suggestion. Staff continues to explore all options to include how could we work with the district. David Goodson, sixteen forty Hedge Apple Drive, made the comment, Diane made points about the budget. We should have dialogue instead of just looking at us. Would like to know about the nine hundred thousand dollar budget amendment. Entertain dialogue to answer questions. As a response, yeah, we heard you. Here's the answers, the answers up above on the, the budget. He also made the comment, great idea about having the county respond to fires. Again, see the response above or about the Pettis County Fire Protection District Number One responding to fires. He then said, made a comment that contractors are not wanting to work in Sedalia. The architect he is working with made a comment that he does not, doesn't care if he ever does another job in Sedalia. Response, I would enjoy the opportunity to meet with him or anyone else with this sentiment in effort to find out how can we improve. Specifics would be instrumental in identifying what needs to change. I continue to meet with individuals with complaints and have investigated them with the approach of we can always do better, so looking for what that is. We remain open to suggestions on how to address these concerns. He also made the comment that if anyone wants a vote no sign on the council terms, he has some. That again was, although that response, or although that, that was directed towards the audience and not council, it would be good for the public to be aware of the discussions and debate about putting this question to the voters. This was a very healthy public discussion with various council members making points for and against longer terms. Clearly, the individual council members are split on support for and against this measure, all with reasons that have merit. However, they were all united in providing the opportunity for the voters to express their desire. Similarly, staff expressed, expressed there are valid, good and bad points to both directions, and thereby gave no recommendation and only explained the process. This issue is squarely in the hands of the voters where it should be. We all encourage everyone to go vote, let their voice be heard. Gary Smith, three oh five South Ohio. All ordinances were proposed and finalized with no opportunity for the public to comment. This, as a response to that, we realize that it can appear that during the formal council meeting, that business moves quickly with not a lot of discussion. This discussion, the discussion and presentations during open meetings are designed to provide transparency to the process. With that, though, in the case of that particular meeting, the subject matter for most of the ordinances prop before the council have been discussed at numerous previous open meetings, because most of those were on the budget. Interested parties are encouraged to review the recordings of each meeting for the background, presentations, and debate over these items. Also, council is presented with many documents and conduct committee meetings in between the full council. As Mr. Hiller, Councilman Hiller held up the packet that, that was for this meeting, they all get that every time it is available to the public. And so those packets are sent out in advance of the meetings, and I will give credit where credit is, is certainly due, this council does do their homework. They read those packets. They don't come here unprepared. They go through that information and often are contacting staff in between meetings when they get the council packets and asking questions for clarification, those kinds of things. So they come to the meeting after already doing all of that homework. And, and then, so then they are more informed and pertinent to making these discussions as a body with their vote. Thereby, when it comes for time for the formal approval of an ordinance, much work has been denied in the background before the careful decision is made. As far as no opportunity for the public to comment, each of these meetings ahead of this time have been open to the public with the same good and welfare opportunities to speak at every one of them. Further, there were two separate occasions that the public was specifically invited to provide input to council on the strategic plan and the budget. This included at the beginning of that meeting before any ordinances were considered. Additionally, council is very open to their constituents and often are fielding phone calls and meetings directly with interested parties in between the meetings. David Covington, twenty-six oh one East Twelfth, made the comment that water mains alerts, what is our goal about the infrastructure, bridge, roads, et cetera, goals to improve? The response is, first of all, see the responses above regarding the lengthy process and recorded meetings to develop and present the goals for infrastructure improvement. Further, now that the budget is finalized, it will be put online as soon as it is published, along with the five-year capital improvement plan to give all of that information. Paula Walter, twenty-six ten Plaza Avenue, had a couple of comments. First was, she compared the, the third world country on the east side of the post office. Is there a, any city plan to address how horrendous it looks? South of Broadway on Kentucky and Ohio, these two streets used to be nice, now terrible The response, the city continues to work on methods for neighborhood revitalization. This includes a balanced approach of using incentives, encouragement, and finally enforcement of property maintenance codes. As presented in several meetings, the city has developed an incentive program under code section three fifty-three to help in this area. As part of this, a Sedalia Redevelopment Corporation has been formed and seed monies have been allocated to the efforts. Additionally, over the last several years, concerted efforts to improve the infrastructure continue. This includes water and sewer line replacement, road buildings, sidewalks, et cetera. Of course, all of these efforts are, are constrained by the availability of funding. Janet Mazanski, hope I said that right, seven twenty-three East Fifth. My neighborhood used to be a good neighborhood. Now see on security camera young people with backpacks. Saw someone at five AM with a crack pipe on her porch. Response, fewer and fewer individuals choose to enter law enforcement while more and more are leaving the profession. This has left most all agencies short, including Sedalia. As presented in the strategic plan session over the last several years, we continue to implement strategies to compensate for fewer personnel with technology and more advanced policing techniques, and Chief Woolery kind of went through some of those again with you all tonight. These techniques include a comprehensive approach where we focus on the environment to remove the propensity for crime. This involves utilizing other resources throughout the city to help promote law-abiding submitted citizens while encouraging criminals to move along elsewhere. Several of these tools and techniques are included in this budget and were in the strategic plan for the police department. Interested parties are encouraged, encouraged to review the recording of the December fourth, twenty-twenty-three meeting where the police department plan was presented. Further, the items discussed specifically in this plan such as, such as problem-oriented policing, crime resolution unit, special response team, data analytics, drones, K-nine unit, license plate recognition, neighborhood three sixty cameras, shot detection, community engagement are all examples of policing tactics supporting, supported in the budget and also fits in the overall strategies of the city, such as the three fifty-three, neighborhood redevelopment, infrastructure improvement, et cetera. Also, she made the comment that coming in from the east side, nothing to be proud of. All development has south and west. Why can't we give a little attention to the east and north? As a response, while the city government cannot dictate to developers where they choose to put their money, the city continues to work on the environmental factors that either promote or impede private development. As part of this, the city does focus attention for infrastructure and public places throughout the community. A great and recent example was just announced the day of that meeting, the three eighteen meeting, where an aquatic and recreation bowling center is being planned for the east central side of town. Further, the comments above, such as the three fifty-three redevelopment area and projects, sidewalk replacements, water mains, roads, park improvements, et cetera, are spread throughout the community with significant focus on the north and east areas. She also made the comment, people are getting their properties taken away from them because they cannot remodel. As a response, we would like to investigate specific examples of this concern. I know, I'm aware of and we're, we, that there have been several structures that have been deemed dangerous through a process that assures the due process. However, I am not aware of any, any properties that were taken away from them. So would like to, like to hear, hear those examples. She also made the comment, they were told they had seven days to fix up a house they bought in terrible shape. So as a response, I looked up this property that appears to have been purchased in November of twenty sixteen, found a case in, that was created in March sixteenth of twenty twenty-three, so six and a half years later, and a notice was sent including a request to contact the code enforcement officer by March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, twelve days later. There was a follow-up conducted on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, sixty-two days later, with a picture that appears to show the same condition. Then there was another follow-up on June eighth, twenty twenty-three, eighty-four days later, with a picture showing the concern being addressed, and the case was closed. Would like to have the opportunity to discuss in more detail what gave the impression they only had seven days to fix the problem. We have identified that the standard language in the notices being used are not particularly effective and may be part of the reason for misconceptions. We have therefore identified a way to clean up these notices and make them more encouraging and concise in what specific action is being requested. She also made the, made the response, or comment that there are more officers are needed out at night. And again, would refer to the comments made earlier about our abilities to hire police officers and what we're doing about that. She made the comment also that people are out at four AM. They are up to no good. Again, you know, we understand that and understand that concern and are doing what we can. Also made the comment, bring some businesses to the east side. Response, as mentioned earlier, the city cannot dictate to businesses where they choose to invest. However, we can and continue to work on the environment to encourage and incentivize such investments. The center on Sutherland Side will help, help because that used to be a homeless camp. I'm sorry, that was another one of her comments. Response, we agree. This is exactly why the city took the step to purchase this property from the railroad as we saw them continue to own it, yet not maintaining it with impeding development all around it and dragging down the environment as discussed earlier. Likewise, the railroad is very difficult to deal with, so you, so it took us over a year with a great deal of persistence to purchase this property and clean it up for redevelopment. Private investors previously just moved on rather than wasting their time with the railroad. This is just one example of how the city is taking specific steps to improve the environment and encourage development as mentioned earlier. There is no one answer to these concerns if it's a comprehensive, citywide approach from multiple angles. Nancy Sims Van Buren, she, she lives on Broadway but moving back to the north side. She made the comment about concerned about the bridge and fire department. Again, response, we agree and referred to the earlier comment. She also made the comment, in emergency fire department, yeah, can't get there, not just the fire department, but any first responder. If we are waiting ten minutes for an ambulance or a police officer, someone is going to die. Response, we agree. We need and are focused on all emergency response concerns that the bridge via out represent. We are looking for added comprehensive solutions to include the possibility of adding another bridge. Hal Kruger, twenty-one eight seventy-six, and I couldn't understand the, the street, street address. Made the comment, trying to keep properties clean, but vagrants come and after run off, they leave the trash. Also made the comment, need something to make sure the vagrants pick up their trash. They go drag stuff out of dumpsters, then leave it on your property. Give law enforcement some teeth. If you arrest, just have to pay to house him. Response, we agree. The laws currently on the books provide little assistance in this area. We will continue to look for creative solutions and appreciate any and all ideas and support as we work to find them. Over the long term, the approach is to remove the root causes of what causes the vagrancy in the first place. However, I realize that this does little to solve the immediate concern that we certainly share with you. Becca Lastrada, six oh eight West Third, made the comment, once a month, the bills and department head credit card receipts were listed on the agenda. Want us to go back to that. The response, as per the financial management policies, council is provided a listing of all disbursements each month. Further, they are provided other financial reports that provide transparency and oversight. Council members often raise questions regarding these reports in this oversight role. These reports are very voluminous and therefore, in my opinion, would be counterproductive to list on the agenda as it would make the agenda so long that other key decision information would get washed out and overlooked. Our reporting system is designed to provide information in a digestible format while ensuring that any areas of concern are flagged for a deeper dive. That concludes all of the comments that were made in the, in the public comment periods of the council meeting and the results of my research. So hopefully that helps provide response.
Okay, very good. Now what we're going to do is we're going to go and open up the good and welfare portion of our agenda. So anybody from the audience that'd like to provide public comment, go and step to podium, state your name and address, and you got three minutes.
Harry Hoferd, fourteen oh eight South Barrett. You know, now I'm on the radio every morning taking Charlie Thomas's place. After the meeting last week, I talked to several people that had called in, and I put it out there. I said, you know, I heard people weren't coming to here to do business, to do work. I said, why are y'all hanging out in the back, back there when the room is full? And I know a bunch of you already been posting stuff on Facebook, but you won't get up here and talk. They said as citizens and business owners and property owners, they're afraid of retaliation. That's exactly what they said. Is that what you guys wanted? Is that what the county wanted? Is that what you guys wanted to feel as, they were going to be retaliated if they did anything? I mean, I don't think so. Man, I know a lot of you guys up there, you know? Bob, man, you know, it's a long time. And I think the thing is, is that when these people are coming to business and it's affecting real estate, I know a guy had quite a few rental houses. Guy was going to come in, want to get them. Nope. Bailed on them. He still got them. He's still working on them. Reason why? Neighbors complaining, frivolous complaints. Maybe the neighbor doesn't like a neighbor, so they want to start something up. And the whole rumor around town is, well, dang, if you complain enough, guess what? It's by the property because others run them out, or the city will get the property. That's the rumor. We don't need that going on. You know, another thing is, and I've dealt with this. I've talked to the mayor about people learning to talk to somebody. It seems like when you talk here and you come up, and I'll just, like the city minister is always, I'll go up there to get some prints or something. I get talked at and still talk too. I know that we talked about that. I talked about it with the mayor. I mean, that's open. But, you know, I think, and I don't understand why it's so hard, you know, you guys said that you guys want people to come and talk and to work these problems out like with the mayor and registered. Let's find out what the issue is. Let's see what we can do to make this. Well, if they're worried about retaliation, if they're worried about other things like that, why would they want to step up and put that foot forward unless we can get more transparency out here? You know, I had to get, now, I had to get Bob Hiller to get my prints that I paid eight hundred dollars for, for my building, because I went to get my prints to show my contractor, and I was told that they were not my property anymore. I couldn't, didn't get a copy, didn't offer to make me a copy or anything. I mentioned it to Bob. Next day, Bob come over and said, here you go, had me my prints. I really don't give a flip that Bob's a third world councilman. I really don't give a flip if Bob's a third world councilman or not, somebody else went up there and got my prints, and it wasn't me, how'd that happen? We should have a community and a city and a county that wants Sodalia to thrive. And right now, man, it's broke, and we have got to focus on fixing it. And I don't know if two-year terms makes a difference or four-year terms. We gotta get it fixed somehow, man, that's all I got, man, I'm just concerned.
Thank you, Eric.
Yep.
My name is Gary Oldwell, live eight twenty-one, South Arlington Avenue. And I take exception to the response from the city that because we didn't attend the meeting, that we don't have concerns now that have been brought up to us, and I don't think that was a good answer. As far as term limits, I'm gonna vote no, but that's for everybody's decision. My, my feeling is that we're aware, because there's more people in these meetings, did anybody on the council, when these ordinance were coming up, encourage members of their ward to attend? Did they call them? Did they say, there's a, the man's been on the council, he's not rubber stamped, he's already said it? Did he call his members and say, we haven't worn that things, you should be at this meeting? Did anybody, did the mayor? We're here now, and I don't think the response you gave was a good one. That's just my opinion, thank you.
Thank you, Eric, we appreciate you being here. Any else, come on up.
Hi, David Goodson, sixteen forty, Hedge Apple Drive. I'd just like to point out one more time, 'cause maybe it'll get through to you guys. Mayor Dawson, you got a Facebook running back here on your personal page, I'm putting it on mine. Why in the world won't the city put it on your page for the citizens to go and look at? It should be public, it should be live. I know you guys didn't wanna do it, 'cause Albert Reine requested it over and over and over. Man, squash that, it should be out there for citizens who can't make it to be able to view it. It's simple to do, you're doing it now, Mayor Dawson, the city could do it just as easy. Um, Bob, I'm the one that said I thought it was a little precarious or sneaky of the timing of that being put on the ballot. Um, and I said that because this is a low turnout because of, we only have a couple of things to vote on, so typically, that's a better chance of getting something passed. I also like to point out, Bob, respectfully, I disagree with your figures. If you go look at state statute one one five point zero seven seven and statute one one five point one two four, the city will still pay even if there's no one on the ballot. So, that's the state statute you can check out. And some of you may ask why I come to these meetings, I've had a lot of people ask, I never came to a city council meeting, didn't care about it. But I was lied to, I was lied to by our city administrator and our mayor, and I have right here an email. I came to the city and I was gonna build in the county, decided to come into the city. But I was lied to, I was misled, and I was lied to about a civil line and a building permit. And there's no other way to say it. And if anybody'd like to look at this email, I'd be happy to show it to you. That's why I'm here, because I have no trust, my trust was broken. Calvin said and talked to me, we both bled together, shook hands, looked me in the eye, told me the mayor and I agree, we do not need council, they're here, we take care of this. I have a letter from May of twenty-two, when we first started looking at this project, that they would support a no building permit. You guys were lied to. It's not right, and that's why I'm here, because my trust was broken. And that's the way a lot of businesses feel. And to be clear, it was not my architect, it was my engineer, who said about working in Sodalia. Heard it again today, from the supplier to one of my contractors. So it is a problem, and the problems won't change until people change, and that's all I've got to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodson.
Hello, first, um, I'm Debbie Covington, two six zero one, East Paul Street. Um, first, I won't be able to be at the Derek Carr show this weekend, 'cause I'll be helping the Sodalia Community Helping Hands, which I've been doing every Saturday because of the ordinances you pass and the ordinances that are extreme and, uh, complete, uh, overreach. Um, Mr. Hiller, you also have referred to us as being keyboard warriors. So another reason why I put this together is because I'm gonna tell you this to your face, um, uh, to say this face to face, so you can't call me a keyboard warrior. I was born here in Sodalia in nineteen eighty-one, our family business has been here for over thirty-five years. I've always been proud to have roots here in Sodalia and our family business that we work hard at daily. I believe we have a lot of amazing people that work for the city, that work hard, most of which stuck between their job and a tyrannical administration. Over the last several years, our eyes have been open to many issues, and I'd like to list a few, since I'm limited on time and they're in no particular order considering they're, they're all important and concerning. Our code enforcement manager is out of control with the green light from our city administrator, which is a red flag. Our city is taking and hoarding property and real estate, red flag. We have city and city council officials and elected officials using their positions for their own personal gain, including our mayor wanting a pay increase of almost five times the salary and a car from us, red flag. City in Sodalia having little dialogue with the public unless a private, a private meeting, which is rare, red flag. Our roads are horrible, red flag. The city unwilling to sit down and talk to our county officials but quick to sue, red flag. Existing businesses, such as our own, wanting to build new buildings and run in every roadblock imaginable to discourage the new builds, red flag. Mind you, that's on East Fifth, which would do wonders to beautify East Fifth Street. Long-term businesses here wanting to leave Sodalia and set up shop elsewhere, I can attest to this, 'cause we're one on one, one of them. Along with potential businesses avoiding Sodalia because of the reputation of the city administration and code enforcement, red flag. Citizens moving out of town for the same reasons, red flag. Our mayor and city administrator pushing for Sodalia to become a charter city, asking council for over a hundred thousand dollars in advertising, among other wasteful spending, to push their agenda, red flag. Yet you're up in arms about a twenty-five hundred dollars to put your name on a ballot. Low-income, fixed income, and elderly losing their homes for the same ordinances our city officials don't live by. And let me mention, members of management that don't live in Sodalia. How do you think it's right, or even common sense for that matter, that you push extreme ordinances and guidelines that you don't live here? I have heard story after story of six citizens, some with cancer, elderly, single mothers' fathers, losing their homes over the same ordinances some of our elected officials don't even follow. In my opinion, you should live here to have an answer, you should live here to answer to, to Sodalia, day in and day out, from the devastation you create. The shutdown of Washington Street Bridge, that is a major emergency concern, more than anything, um, but it seems as if it's not been a priority as to why it's shut down and unusable. Uh, I appreciate Mr. Irwin's presentation when it comes to the fire station, um, the building and the new fire stations, which I'm glad we were able to, um, see the presentation today because we almost missed it, because you guys went up to your first, had public session, went to your closed session, came back out, we didn't even know you were gonna have a second open session, 'cause you already adjourned the meeting, another red flag. There is very little honesty and transparency from our city, and this is coming as, from a citizen and a business standpoint. Why would you adjourn a public city meeting to open it back up later in the evening when eighty-plus people were left and were locked out? No one expects perfection, no one expects to have ordinances, to not have ordinances. No one expects to not have issues, but we do expect a better, more rational, compassionate way to implement change. We expect transparency and honesty from our elected officials and city administration. We all want better for our town, but at a human level.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor to...
I'd like to, I'd like to motion to suspend the rules to allow Debbie three more minutes to speak.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, you got three more? All right, now, I need a roll call vote, please.
Wait a minute, Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Sorry, I couldn't catch that, Dan.
Yes.
Yes, okay, sorry. Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Okay, you got another three minutes.
There is very little honesty or transparency from our city administration elected officials. Why would you adjourn a public city council meeting to open it back up later in the evening after eighty-plus people left and were locked out, red flag. No one expects perfection, no one expects to not have ordinances. No one expects to not have, for us to not have issues, but what we do expect is a better, more rational, compassionate way to implement change. We expect transparency and honesty from our elected officials and city administration. We all want better for our town, but on a human level. I have so much more to say, I'm sure you guys are very much aware of that. But I have so much more to say, um, just know we are aware and we are awake. But in closing, we need to get back to how it all started, and instead of serving yourselves, get back to serving people, God bless you.
All right, thank you, Debbie. All right, who'd like to come up next, come on up.
Hi, my name is Becca Lastrada, six oh eight West Third Street, Sodalia. I have a question about this, um, Kitty Depot Liberty Park Connect Sodalia project. I was wondering if you all had...
Pull the mic, would you pull the mic?
I'm afraid I might knock it off, I just hit the little one a few times ago. Anyway, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's a lot better.
Thank you. All right, my question is, I see where you pass it tonight, you're getting the TAP grant, five hundred, the city pays, and then you get the grant, correct? Is there any way you can show the citizens a rendering of this? Because people live on Third, there's, I assume it will go through the downtown district, and we are wondering where is everybody going to park? Um, we have Sacred Heart School on Third Street, and I assume that, that this project, connect project, will go through there. So, I'm just requesting a rough rendering, so the people would kind of get an idea of what to expect, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else, come on up.
My name is Chad Danlow, twenty-four oh seven Dennis. I would make a request at the start of my time to allow the city council members to answer my questions, city administrator to answer my questions during this time. Is that a possibility?
Well, I would normally go, you can go and give your comments, and then they'll make them, if they want to.
Well, we'll get a, we'll get a comments by Kelvin Shaw later, which is bullshit.
Yep, they, uh, they can make a motion.
I'm sorry, but it is.
They can make a motion.
Because here's the deal, I had a meeting with you, Mayor Dawson, I had a meeting with Kelvin Shaw, I had a meeting with the H.R. Director. Thirty-five days after that meeting, my vehicle was towed from my property. It was on my property, it was not legally licensed, and I understand that. But after I had that meeting, because I had to discuss code enforcement issues with you, you invited Kelvin Shaw. Those items that I discussed with you three individuals was told to me that no retaliation would be had. Therefore, thirty-five days later, my vehicle was towed from my property. I know that none of you care, but that was my property, taken off of my property. Now, a lot of these individuals that are at this meeting, the city council members, have had meetings with me. I don't know if they understand or even care about me, but I do care about our citizens, and you guys in the middle don't seem to care about our citizens. Kelvin Shaw's got a smug-ass look on his face, and right now, all he cares about is making sure that his son stays as the assistant city, the city's chief, which is complete bullshit. And I will say it to the day I die, because you know what, I know retaliation's coming. And I'll guarantee that the city is coming to my house next week. That's fine, because you know what, it's not worth it. We, as citizens, cannot put up with the retaliation that the city is going to continue to do at our own houses, at our own businesses, at our place of work. It is absolutely and utterly ridiculous that we are gonna continue to allow the city to put us in fear, and I'm done with it. I will not live in fear. I will allow my kids, and I have four boys that I love dearly, to drive around this city and not be harassed. I know that, I will request my other three minutes.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you, sir.
I have a motion, do I have a second? A motion, a second, roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
I appreciate all of you city council members for allowing me to have another three minutes.
Watch your language, please.
I will, I, I apologize, I apologize, and I will, I will refrain from that, but I was passionate.
It's okay, that's good.
Thank you, sir, and, 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 and I saw you at Mass yesterday, and I appreciate you, uh, being at Mass yesterday. And happy Easter to all of you folks.
Don't waste your time, just talk to me anytime, man.
But, this, this city is unbelievable, I love this city. But when we take and we do not allow our citizens to continue to grow, i- it, it gives me absolute heartache. My, my company that I work for has been a business for fifty-two years, absolutely love my boss. Been in, in, in this community for a long time, I'm the grand knight for the, knight of Columbus. We're in the county, I don't have to worry about the city. But, we, as citizens, cannot live in fear of what the city will bring to us. I do a lot of business in this city, and I cannot fear the harassment and, i- i- what I was told, what does it matter to you, you're getting paid anyway by one of our city inspectors? That's a problem, that's a problem, folks. When one of our city administrator, or one of our city inspectors tells me that, what does it matter to you, you're getting paid anyway? That is a problem. So we, as citizens, need to wake up and understand that this city has got to work for us and not us for the city, and that's what I've got to say, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
David Covington, twenty-six oh one, East, East Paul Street. My question is, it's my, my question and a comment, on the br- bridge of Wash- Washington Avenue, um, my concern is, are we going to repair the bridge or are we going to rebuild the bridge? 'Cause when I hear the word repair, it sounds to me, wanna just patch it up, uh, when I hear the word repair. But we say we're gonna rebuild the bridge, we want a bridge that's gonna last for another hundred years. You understand what I'm, you know what, you understand what I'm saying? So we want something that's gonna last for a long time, a lifetime, really. So are we gonna repair the bridge or are we going to rebuild the bridge? And that's my question and my comment to you all.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, point of information regarding the bridge, are we able to answer that reform real quick? I believe we're in the middle of discussion about what best solution that is, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's under consideration, actually do both.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Viola Satan, I am at seven oh six West Cooper Street, and my problem is, I've paid, I don't know how many thousands for, um, um, architecture fees, engineering fees, and now I bought another building, no one wants to come do work at my, my building because of the city code, city code, city code. How are we supposed to stay afloat, man, we're constantly paying out money for stuff? I have a villain right now that we have to pay another mortgage payment, 'cause I can't even open up, you know, it's ridiculous, something's got to give, so, I don't know what else to say.
All right, thank you, Ms. Satan. All right. Anybody else?
Seeing no more public comment, a motion moved to closed-door session for legal advice for the state to negotiate a contract.
All those in favor?
We need a roll call.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, you have a motion, a second, to, uh, return to the open meeting.
Bliss, do you need...
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yep.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Okay, I call for the reading of the ordinance approving quick claim deed for the sale of the property commonly known as five fifteen East Twenty-Fifth Street, from City of Sodalia, Missouri, to Maxim Condricki and Victoria Condricki.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-eight. An ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as five fifteen East Twenty-Fifth Street, from the City of Sodalia, Missouri, to Maxim Condrick and Victoria Condricki.
Second reading.
Second.
A motion, a second, any council discussion? Uh, have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four fifty-eight. An ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as five fifteen East Twenty-Fifth Street, from the City of Sodalia, Missouri, to Maxim Condrick and Victoria Condricki.
Final passage?
Second. I have a motion, a second, for the final passage of this bill, any council discussion regarding that? Have you heard none? Roll call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the motion to adjourn?
I, I think we should stay about another hour or two.
We can do that.
April Fool!
Oh, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned.